Welcome, everybody, to this very auspicious occasion. The last meeting of the City Council. It's a special meeting. Boulder City Council on October 29th, 2019. Lynette, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Brockett.
Present.
Carlisle.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Marzelle.
Very present.
Nagel.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yates.
Here.
Young.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Excellent. So, tonight's a little special. It's the last meeting of this council. I just said that, but it's still sinking in. And some of us, it'll be our last council member meeting ever. And we're going to start off with a few declarations to acknowledge that. So, with that, I'm turning it over to Councilwoman Marzelle.
So, I am very excited to be able to read this declaration in honor of Cindy Carlisle's service on the Boulder City Council and contributions to our community. Cindy Carlisle was first elected to a four-year term on the Boulder City Council in 1985 and served until 1989. She returned 28 years later to serve again in 2017. She will continue to serve until her term ends on November 19th, 2019. During her two tenures on council, Cindy has been an incredibly strong environmentalist, advocating for slow-growth policies, protecting open space, increasing transportation access and affordability, and preserving our historic buildings. Shortly after her first term in 1985, Cindy supported the preservation of the Chautauqua Meadow, protecting it from being converted into a parking lot. In her first term, she also helped with the effort to keep updates to the Boulder Valley Comp Plan focused only on the specific changes that were needed. Some of Cindy's major achievements during her first term include establishing today's extensive off-street bike and pedestrian system, now known as Boulder's Tributaries Greenways Program, backing programs to fund affordable housing projects, and crafting the city's woo-woo first pesticide ordinance in her second. That was really incredible. In her second term, Cindy focused on the city's budget, working to make it more transparent and accountable, crafted new land-use codes to protect many of the city's neighborhood business districts, and worked to ameliorate some of the competing pressures of growth in Boulder, including in Boulder's open space and mountain park system. Between Cindy's two tenures on council, Cindy served on the city's Jobs-to-Population Task Force, the Homeless Shelter Task Force, and the Civic Use Task Force Number Four. None of this stuff is easy. Her other civic commitments, among many, include serving on the boards of EcoCycle, New Era Colorado's founding board, the University of Colorado Law School's Center for Energy and Environmental Security, and Boulder's First Committee for Campaign Finance Reform, which led to a successful initiative on campaign finance reform, still in place today. Between her two tenures on council, Cindy also served for six years, from 2003 to 2009, representing Colorado's 2nd Congressional District as Regent for the University of Colorado, where she chaired the Capitol Construction Committee. While Regent, Cindy served on the Laws and Policies Committee and helped cofound the Center for Energy and Environmental Security. Cindy also served... I should have asked you to come up first.
That's right. You'll eventually get the hang of this.
Even after 20 years, I get a little nervous. Where was I? Cindy also served on the City of Boulder University of Colorado Working Group to help rebuild relations which were needed between the city and the university. This was an enormous undertaking. In this capacity as a Regent and former alumni from CU Boulder, she used her insights and university experience to enhance town-gown relations and forge a strong partnership with the city and the University of Colorado at Boulder. Through her years, Cindy has remained an engaged and impassioned supporter of multimodal transportation in Boulder. She chaired the city's first Transportation Master Plan Committee, adopted in 1989, and led the multimodal transportation-focused group to create seminal Boulder routes such as the Hop, Skip, and Jump. In addition... Never perfect, but, you know, you've just got to keep on trying. Extensive Bike Plan. Throughout the years, Cindy has championed full ridership access for students and continues to support programs that make it easy and safe for all of Boulder's residents to navigate the city successfully. In 2019, she had the opportunity to revisit long-term transit planning, where she and the rest of City Council approved the latest transportation master plan along with the pedestrian master plan and the Vision Zero Plan. Cindy has been recognized for her community service multiple times. In 1990, Cindy was awarded the Pace Setter Award for the Arts and Entertainment by the Boulder Daily Camera. Cindy also received the Woman of the Year Award from the University of Colorado Boulder Women's Resource Center as well as receiving an award for special service to the Tibetan people from the International Campaign for Tibet. Cindy also was recognized with the Distinguished Service Award from the Center for Energy and Environmental Security at the University of Colorado. Throughout Cindy's 30-plus-year involvement in local politics, she has steadfastly maintained her focus on the practical realities of situations and has resisted distractions from various latest-greatest schemes. Cindy brought traditional progressive values to the City Council and worked to restore trust in city government. And perhaps more importantly, she has maintained her relationship with Boulder's essential spirit by staying connected to both its residents and its natural setting. Cindy has helped codify the fundamental essence that makes Boulder such a great place to live today. We, the members of the Boulder City Council, recognize, honor, and appreciate the service on City Council and significant contributions to the city and community made by Cindy Carlisle. Thank you, Cindy, for your years of service and a job well done.
Well, I didn't really prepare anything like at the Academy Awards, right? Even though I knew this was coming. But what I can say is that I love Boulder. I love the university, and I love the citizens, residents, who show up here time and time again and let us know that they care about the community and they care about what's happening. I admire and respect my council members. And with Lisa and I go, as one can see, listening to this, so far back. And she's an amazing person, and it's been an honor to be able... We haven't served before together, so this has been really great fun. And I would just ask us to remember those who went before. When I started on this journey myself, people like Al Bartlett, Gilbert White, Ruth Wright. They're seminal voices, visionary, in the community. And I'm very appreciative to those. And I hope those coming forward, as the torch has passed here, will keep in mind the work and the love that those who preceded them have put into this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. And I have to thank you. You are an incredible person. And I have to thank Cindy. Back in the early '90s, she mentored me and got me interested in serving on the Boulder City Council. So, thank you for all of that. And thank you, Erin. And here you get a prize. A nice present that says Cindy Carlisle. Your leadership and commitment are invaluable to our community. Thank you for your generosity and dedication to helping others. And helping others is exactly what you've done.
Thank you, Marzelle.
All right. Next up, Suzanne. Come on up. So, let me just say, before I start reading, what an incredible honor it is for me to read this declaration for Suzanne here. She's been a real mentor to me. In my four years on council, I've learned an enormous amount. We've worked together. You know, I do various things around the region. And of course, Suzanne, as our mayor, goes to things like Metro Mayors and Mayor and Commissioner Coalition events. And wherever I go, people always speak to me so highly of the work that she does and the way that she represents our city. So, we've been very, very fortunate to have her for the last eight years and particularly the last four years as mayor. Let's see if I can get through this. Okay. All right. It's going to, you know... Grab a cup of coffee. It's going to be a little while. All right. "A Declaration in Honor of Suzanne Jones's Service on the Boulder City Council and Contributions to the Community, October 29th, 2019. Suzanne Suzanne Jones was elected to two four-year terms on the Boulder City Council, beginning in 2011, and will continue to serve until the end of her second term on November 19th, 2019. Prior to her election in 2011, Suzanne was already heavily involved in the business of the city of Boulder and committed to work on policies that improve the environment and our community. Suzanne served on the city's Environmental Advisory Board from 2006 to 2011, and later on the city's Second Blue Ribbon Commission from 2008 to '10. In her day jobs, Suzanne has been at the forefront of protecting the environment. Previous positions for the Wilderness Society, the National Wildlife Federation, as a congressional staffer for the Fisheries and Wildlife Subcommittee in the U.S. House of Representatives, and other duties show this strong commitment to the environment and our planet. And today, Suzanne is the Executive Director of EcoCycle, a nonprofit with longstanding ties in the community. During her eight years on council, Suzanne has accomplished a great deal. Some of Suzanne's achievements on council include evolving and expanding Boulder's approach to homelessness to focus on housing people and providing a pathway out of homelessness, increasing our support for public art, approving a self-sufficiency wage for city employees, strong support for the city moving forward and creating a city-owned municipal utility, expanding the city's cooperative housing ordinance, designating Boulder as a sanctuary city, adopting an annual celebration of Indigenous Peoples' Day, and leading formal consultation with Native American tribes affiliated with the area. As a council member, Suzanne has served on multiple subcommittees, including the Civic Pad Use Task Force Number Four, the Denver Regional Council of Governments, Boulder County's Resource Conservation Advisory Board, the Legislative Committee, and the Retreat Planning Committee. Now, of course, Suzanne has served the last four years as mayor, where she has represented the city on issues at local and global scales. As mayor, she worked with council to find common grounds on issues such as affordable housing and municipalization of the city's electric utility. Suzanne's collaborative leadership style has helped to meld public input with council opinions to craft consensus on policy solutions. And Suzanne has been a leader in considering actions taken by other communities regarding climate change, use of fossil fuels, and housing. Suzanne has been pivotal to Boulder's inclusion on issues of concern at local, state, and national levels. Suzanne has engaged actively at the regional level with various transportation coalitions to grow multimodal transit networks, connecting Boulder with other metropolitan partners. And she has even carried the city's interests abroad, where she forged meaningful partnerships and promoted Boulder's unique character on the international stage, including in Paris just a couple weeks ago. We're all very jealous. Suzanne's background in public policy, combined with her passion for the environment and climate action, have made Suzanne a very successful councilperson and mayor. Suzanne has worked across political and technical spheres to create policy-based solutions to address climate change within Boulder that are reflected in the city's current zero-waste ordinance, ambitious climate goals, energy efficiency standards, and strong positions to protect Boulder from fracking and other destructive operations. So, we, the members of the City Council of the city of Boulder, recognize, honor, and appreciate the service on City Council and significant contributions to the city and community made by Suzanne Jones. Thank you for being the strong leader you have been for Boulder. We are going to miss you a whole lot, so...
I can't thank you all enough. It has been a huge honor and pleasure... There's my twin. It's been a huge honor and pleasure. Oh, you're killing me. I wasn't going to get all teary. I'm just going to say, for the record, everyone should be able... Everyone should have a twin. I feel like it's kind of cheating. I just want to say thank you. It's been one of the great honors of my life to serve on City Council, to serve all of you, and to be mayor. It's... One of the places where I think democracy still works is at the local level. And the reason it works is, I think, because we have such an informed and engaged public that really cares and that frankly drives the policy forward and makes things happen. So, I want to thank all of you for your engagement, all the people out in TV land. We have a proud history of activism in this city to carry us forward. We also hire the best and brightest staff. And I... We don't make your lives easy, but together we get great things done. And I think a lot of the great work Boulder does is so dependent on those staff. And then finally, we have a fantastic council, and it has been so... It's actually been really fun to serve with all of you. And I got to serve with a few other councils. We always save the best for last. And yes, I have learned so much from each and every one of you. And I'll just say that I'm proud of the work that we've done. I first ran for council because of the environment and because Boulder was so committed to acting on climate. And while we haven't quite delivered municipalization, we've been moving forward. We're changing the world around that issue. We've helped Excel get greener. And we're moving forward. And again, I thank the people for helping move that agenda. I'll also say that I think we've done some important work around inclusivity and trying to be more welcoming. And yeah, we have a lot more work to do. But I'm glad that one of the last votes we're going to take tonight is on our police oversight panel. And again, we'll just keep moving forward. And I know this city is very divided over the issues of growth and development. I'm proud that we have focused on the affordability part because that's what everybody does agree on. And we've passed a lot of policies, and we move forward a lot of projects that will add affordable housing to the city to help preserve some of the diversity and uniqueness and sense of community. So, I'm glad for that. I'll note that all of this is a work in progress. Cities are always a work in progress. And there's a poster that hangs in the office downstairs in the City Council office. And it's a quote by Plato. And I love this quote. And it is, "The city is what it is because the people who are who they are." And I think that that's very true, and that's what gives me hope for the future. So, thank you so much.
All right. And we present you with this lovely sculpture thing.
Oh, great.
It's beautiful.
So, I am beyond honored and humbled to be able to read a declaration in honor of Lisa Marzelle. Where did she go?
She's gone.
There she comes. Lisa has been a real mentor to me on council. And so, to be able to send her off at her last council meeting after she has served 20 of the last 24 years is really something else. And so, I'm going to read through this. And there will be a lot of things that are going to get left out because there's no way I could cover in detail all the accomplishments that Lisa has been part of with the City Council. So, Lisa Marzelle first came to Boulder in 1958 as a child en route to Rocky Mountain National Park to hike and camp with her family. She later moved to Boulder in 1977 and soon became involved in various issues such as protesting the manufacturing of nuclear warhead triggers at Rocky Flats, getting arrested sometimes even, supporting food co-ops, serving as an EcoCycle block and region leader, and enjoying Boulder's open space. Her involvement increased over time. And in 1995, she first ran for Boulder City Council as a voice for Boulder. Having been fully involved in North Boulder sub-community planning issues since the late '80s, Lisa ran on a platform of representative and transparent governance, slow-growth policies that fully engage the community, strong environmental policies whose goals are to reduce our carbon emissions and other environmental impacts on the earth, safer transportation options and connections for the pedestrian and bicyclist, support for affordable housing funding, and a strong fiscal budget with ample emergency reserves. I believe Lisa tells the story. When she got on, we were somewhere in the 2% reserves level. And now, we're at 19.5%. She has stayed this course in each of her terms on council, '95 to '99, '99 to 2003, 2007 to 2011, 2011 to 2015, and 2015 to the current day. From Lisa's perspective, it has been an absolute honor to represent the residents of Boulder, help resolve their problems, and contribute to shaping the future of Boulder. In November 2015, Lisa was elected to her fifth four-year term on the Boulder City Council. Some of the accomplishments of the Boulder City Council that Lisa had been part of include adopting the Kyoto Protocols regarding curbing greenhouse gas emissions, supporting the municipalization of Boulder's electricity supply since 1997, supporting zero-waste goals, including acquisition of the 6,400 Arapaho site for repurposing and recycling hard-to-repurpose materials, supporting integrated pest management, which minimizes the use of pesticides and has virtually stopped the city organization using neonicotinoids. Over 25,000 acres of open-spaced land have been acquired while Lisa was on council. She supported the establishment of the Rocky Flats Wildlife Refuge, supported establishment of the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan, the first sub-community plan in Boulder and still the only one right now, supported the establishment of the first inclusionary housing goal in 2000, which has since increased to 15% affordable to low- and moderate-income earners, established a fund for legal counsel for residents of Boulder Meadows Mobile Home Park in 2001, and has remained a tireless advocate for people who live in mobile home parks. Advocated for the establishment of the Hop-Bus service, followed by the Skip, Dash, Jump, and so on. Advocated for and established many tens of miles of greenways, bike paths, and bike lanes throughout Boulder. Established a dark-skY ordinance, which required an amazing amount of persistence over a 15-year implementation period. So, during the time Lisa has served on City Council, she has played a key role in expanding our sister cities' projects. She has had the privilege of voting to add Yaterris, Cuba, Yamagata, Japan, Monte, Mexico, Kasumu, Kenya, Nablus, Palestine, and Ramat Hanagev, Israel, and Kathmandu, Nepal, to our older sister cities, including Yalapa, Nicaragua, Dushan Bay, Tajikistan, and Lhasa, Tibet. Lisa has three incredible sons, all born and raised in Boulder and now living in Boulder and Denver. With Jan Marzelle, Lisa designed and built the first structural adobe house in the city of Boulder where they raised their children. The house is highly energy-efficient, solar-powered, and has low maintenance. Lisa has maintained an organic garden and fruit orchard for the past 30 years. Lisa was raised in Kansas City, Missouri, as the fourth of six siblings. Her educational background includes a BS in Geology, an MS in Geology, and a PhD in Geology and Geophysics. Lisa has worked at the U.S. Geological Survey as a research geologist since 1977 and is currently scientist emeritus working with the Yellowstone Volcano Observatory. As a physical volcanologist, she can take the heat. Being a woman in a field of science formerly dominated by male scientists, her career path has not always been without barriers. Lisa has worked hard to ensure discrimination against anyone is not an option and that everyone has a fair and equal opportunity in employment, in politics, and in society. And lastly, a final accomplishment by Lisa Marzelle that she and the community as a whole can be very proud of and celebrate is commencing construction on the North Boulder branch of the Boulder Public Library system. Persistent dedication to her community is the hallmark of Lisa's dedicated service. The Boulder community has been very blessed to have the dedicated and fearless service of Lisa Marzelle for over 25 years. And we honor your service to the community. Thank you, Lisa.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you. Thank you for that. That was very nice. I want to thank the people of Boulder. I never wanted to be a politician. I just kind of happened into it. And I ran the first time because I thought our voices needed to be heard. That I wanted a more transparent government. That I wanted good land-use planning with doing the best with what we have left and making sure that we're very careful with that. I wanted a library. I wanted us to be a cohesive community that worked together. And I wouldn't be here if it were not for all the people I worked with a long time ago in the Boulder Neighborhood Association. And then, you know, in my own little neighborhood where we cofounded our own little neighborhood association and then forming the North Boulder Coalition because there were development... Serious development plans happening up in North Boulder. And while we had our differences within the community, I said, "If we don't speak with one voice, we will be divided and conquered. So, we have to come across our differences and speak with this one voice." And we did. And we were able to get And we were able to get the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan passed, and people like Erin, living in it and happily living in it, and making something I'm very proud of. We have 48% affordable housing in that North Boulder Subcommunity Plan. I also want to thank the people for electing me for five four-year terms. And it's with you that we were able to create the vision and what we were able to create in Boulder. None of this can be done alone. And I want to thank all of the previous councils that I've served with. This is my 10th council. And every single one of those members actually helped me. I was never on a board, really, before I got on council. I didn't know Robert's Rules of Order. I couldn't care less. But, you know, my purpose was to get things done and to make the people's voice be heard, voices be heard. And that my family, my sons Tim, Nathaniel, and Jesse, supported me through all of this. I just have to thank, and I have to thank all my friends who I haven't seen for many I also have to thank, I have an incredible thanks to the staff. And we could not, on city council, do what we do without a great staff. We would be nothing without our staff. And our staff are the professionals that put our ideas into real formulas and how we can get this accomplished. And through that, I am very proud of the amount of affordable housing that we have gotten done, accomplished. I am very happy that we are working, you know, to move forward with social equity, with being cognizant that we're not as perfect as we need to be, that we have a long way to go in terms of racial equity, and making sure that everybody feels included in this community. So I'm very proud and happy that we're still continuing in this, and I would hope we never forget about that. We all have an important voice. It doesn't matter who is speaking. And I learned early on, I could close my eyes and just listen to what people have to say, and take that voice and try and thread it into a fabric that would work for the broader community. I'm very proud of all we've done on various land-use issues, on sub-community planning, on getting use tables passed, and there's going to be a lot more work to do, on doing community benefits. It's been an issue that we haven't really tackled, but we finally have. And I'm very happy for all of the open space that we've been able to accomplish in all of these years. And it was a lot of strategy by other council members. Nobody does any of this alone. We're all a team, and we can have our differences. But in those differences, and I've learned this so well with this council, I would have to say, of my 10 councils, no offense to any of the previous ones, this is absolutely my favorite council. And the reason is not because I get my way all the time, but because we have such intense debates and really deep discussions about what the issues are and how to resolve these. And we've met each other with respect and comedy, and I would hope that the next council going forward understands that it's not so easy being on council. You don't just come in and say, oh, I'm going to fix something, and turn a switch and have it fixed. If that was the case 31 years ago when I started on North Boulder Library, we would have already been in there. It's not easy. And it's not all politics. It's money, it's where we are with our reserves, it's what we can do. And so it's very complex. I wish the switches were there. They're not. And so for the next council who comes on, and I wish everybody well, and I thank everybody who's running in this election, be respectful to each other, I hope. I hope you can be. And be kind. And having differences isn't so easy, but if you have an understanding person on the other end, it does make it a lot easier to speak about those differences and to come to a resolution that works not for you, but for the broader community, because that's what it's all about. And I have to thank Lynette and Heidi, being here all these years, and all the previous clerks. It's not easy on them either, and they put in an incredible amount of work to the dedication of our city. So I am going to leave, and I am waiting to go into the doors of Narnia in Yellowstone National Park in a couple weeks and say goodbye to the world for a little bit. But I'm going to stay in Boulder, and I will continue to be part of this community. And I hope and wish everybody well. And Boulder is about greatness, and we can do anything we set our minds to do. And so I just hope everybody can go forward recognizing their differences, but recognizing their commonalities and how great a community we have and can be. And from the bottom of my heart, I thank everybody. I have one other thing.
Just one more question.
I do have seven postcards to give to my fellow council members who are here. They were printed in 1993. I got them when I first came on council in 1995. They're 19-cent postcards. And back then, we hardly had email. So I'm giving each one of my fellow council members a postcard to remember me by and maybe send me a note. And then I have, because I got to serve on the Denver, what is it called? Denver Water Flood Control. Urban Drainage and Flood Control that has a new name. And I'm going to turn this over to Sam, Returning the Platte River to the People. And that's by Joe Shoemaker, who was the founder of the Urban Drainage and Flood Control. So, anyway.
All right.
All right. It's up to you.
Picture?
Picture?
Do you want a picture?
Picture.
All right, look, look. Who's doing it? She's like, who's taking it?
At least a.
Everybody has it.
I know.
Can you put that on my?
I would avoid around the plants.
Perfect, three going off in the middle?
Yeah.
Push together. Here we go. Ready? One, two, three. Let's do it two more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, now down to some business. Because this is a special council meeting, we don't have public comment. We're only going to have, we have a very long consent agenda that is going to take a little discussion, but then we'll have one public hearing, and that's on our Police Oversight Task Force ordinance. So if you want to speak to that, please sign up over there. And with that.
Your consent agenda tonight contains items A through O.
So a couple of these are meaty and deserve a little bit of discussion. Not sure where we want to start. Lisa, do you have?
Yeah, I called it 3E, but I meant it's 3D. It was called 3E in our packet, but it's 3D. And this has to do with appointing.
It's 2.
2D. 2D, sorry.
You're going to catch on to this soon.
And so I had an email discuss, I sent out an email earlier this morning asking that we consider hiring the Fort Collins attorney, given that, for this investigation, given that that individual is outside of Boulder, has nothing to do with Boulder County, and that on this particular issue, people are pretty divided, and that I'm not questioning anybody's ethics or their integrity, but I want to make sure that this investigation is as squeaky-clean as possible and that there, at the end of this investigation, there is no doubt left in terms of the results of that investigation. So I have asked that our city attorney contact the City of Fort Collins City Attorney's Office and see if we could have an attorney from their office represent this investigation.
So let me turn to Tom Carr.
I have reached out to the Fort Collins City Attorney. I have not heard back. So your options are either appoint, as I've suggested, or we'll bring it back after I've spoken with the Fort Collins City Attorney. This request came in today.
Can we approve it upon that condition?
I would be reluctant to appoint someone who has not consented to the appointment or has even knows about it. That seems a bit much.
I think what we're saying is, Tom, can we delegate to the authority to engage someone from the Fort Collins Attorney's Office?
Sure.
Does that work as an amended 2D?
Can you make it broader? So someone, an attorney who has not worked in the city of Boulder and is not from Boulder County?
And with whom you haven't, you don't have a, didn't used to work for you or something like that?
Yeah.
No one from Seattle.
There's a lot of good attorneys.
Yeah, but starting with Fort Collins, right?
Well, I'll start there, but.
Well, you already did, so, okay. Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll consider that an amended. Okay. Also on this consent agenda is all of our budgets, which we already talked about at length. 2M is our community benefits program, isn't it? Yes. And I just wanted to do a shout-out to that. That is to incentivize more affordable housing in exchange for Denny City, and that was a lot of work. 2N is opportunity zone, and we've been getting a lot of email about that, and I think we want to clarify for everybody exactly what that is and what it isn't. And I'm going to put Sam on the spot.
Okay, well, when we started the process of looking at the opportunity zone, we put a moratorium in, I think in December of 2018. And the intention of the moratorium had two folds. One was to change and review all of the use tables in the 18-zone districts that are part of the opportunity zone and make sure that what we would be getting would be focused on neighborhood-serving retail and affordable housing. So we made those changes. We limited the office space in hotels in the opportunity zone. And then we further stated, and I made the motion, so I read my motion language, we further stated that we wanted to protect all of the market-rate affordable housing, which is present in the opportunity zone. And we did that with an overlay district. So we put a district into place, which basically prevents demolitions of market-rate affordable residential housing. And so I feel like we set out to do this process to make sure that what we get from this tax benefit, this tax credit move on the federal government's part, is what we're looking for. So one of the things that was mentioned when Jane put in for this opportunity zone was Diagonal Plaza. So Diagonal Plaza is pretty much, it's owned by seven different owners, and if this tool can be used to get us good outcomes at Diagonal Plaza, I think we will have done our job. So I guess that's how I would summarize how we got to where we are. The other thing I will say that we did ask staff about when we had second reading on this is we asked staff, could they please let us know if there's any more tools that we have? Can we find out where these funds are being used? Is there a way to legally require disclosure? And the answer we got was no. Furthermore, even if we were able to find out where the funds were being used when they transfer, so it's often the case that land gets bought, a project gets entitled, and it gets sold off at that point, and then finding if people who bought subsequently had OZ funding. Staff just told us it really couldn't be done under the set of laws that we have in place today. So there's a summary.
Height.
Height, okay. Well, that's Mary's point, really. Yeah, I would give that to Mary.
Okay.
Mary. So one of the things that occurred to me just as we were voting on this, was that two weeks ago or last week? I don't remember. When we were voting on this was that, and right towards, just before we voted, was that I recalled that we have the height ordinance in place. And so I voted in favor of lifting the moratorium on the hunch that the height ordinance would provide some protections. Over the weekend, I had an exchange with a member of the public over email, and I shared this with this person, and they wrote back and said, well, then, you've done all the studies to show that that is in fact true. And so I thought to myself, yeah, they're right. So I proceeded to write to staff and ask some questions, and I want to ask them again, and I want to ask them publicly so that you all hear the answers that I have heard, because I think it's important. So, Chris?
So, yeah, Chris Meschek is going to answer your questions.
Good evening.
Good evening. On the moratorium, assuming that we move forward with the moratorium, what protections do we have in place that would address the concerns that have been expressed to us by the public?
I think there are several protections that you have in place, and the work that has.
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, sure. Chris Meschek, interim planning director, assistant city manager. Over the last 10 months since, as Councilmember Weaver described, when the moratorium was put into place in December of 2018, council, as a part of that moratorium, outlined a series of efforts that we as staff should go through to ensure that if there is any development that occurs in these areas, how do we make sure that that development gets to the outcomes that we want as a community? And we recognize that there were several areas where what our vision, the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan stated for those areas, our code did not necessarily achieve those same outcomes. And so we did a whole bunch of work to the use tables, that's what is up for third reading tonight, to ensure that we're getting the outcomes that we want. So restricting office in certain zone districts is one area, the amount of office that can be built in certain zoning districts. And Councilmember Weaver described some of the others. The other is, as you've said, Mary, the height ordinance. So the Appendix J map that is in the land-use code right now limits the areas that you can get a height exception and go up to 55 feet. And that's very limited to areas where we've either done intentional planning or the zone district intends for that level of intensity. And so the height ordinance really is one of your strongest tools in your toolbox to ensure that you're getting the outcomes that you want. The vast majority of the opportunity zone is not able to go above the base zoning height and get a height exception. So I think that tool is in the toolbox as well. The last that I would say is the decisions that council made related to the commercial linkage fee. The next phase in of the commercial linkage fee occurs in January, on January 1st, and that's the tipping point that we have heard from many applicants, starts to actually make their projects economically and feasible as well. And so what we're seeing in terms of development trends, anecdotally, I don't have the data yet, we were trying to pull that today, is things are slowing down a little bit as well. And so I think there are several tools in your toolbox using our powers of zoning to ensure that we're getting the outcomes that we want in the area that is located in the opportunity zone.
Thank you for that, Chris. And would you refresh our memory, please, with why we put the height ordinance in place? That's been in for four years?
Yeah.
So if you could refresh our memory on that, wouldn't that be great?
Yeah, I think if we go back to 2015 and remember what was kind of occurring in the community at the time, there was a lot of concern about the types of development and the scale of development that was occurring in certain parts of town, especially in the Boulder Valley Regional Center, the area surrounding 29th Street. And so I think that, along with some of the conversations about projects that are maybe outside of the areas that we would anticipate more intense development or taller buildings, those applications were coming in for height exceptions. And so I think the concern was, where exactly should we have taller buildings within the community? And so in reaction to that, the moratorium was put into place that is the height ordinance that we have today and is part of what is still in place with the Appendix J map that we're going to continue to talk about as we work through Phase 2 of community benefits.
And as I recall, too, the height ordinance was put into place with the understanding that we would work on community benefits. And so we've just gotten through Phase 1, and Phase 2 has still yet to happen. And that would be, currently is scheduled for, is it June of 2021, May or June?
What's in the ordinance is that the Appendix J map would remain until the end of May of 2021. We anticipate beginning Phase 2.
And, and as I recall, too, the, the height ordinance was put into place with the understanding that we would work on community benefits. And so we've just gotten through Phase 1. And, and Phase 2 has still yet to happen. And that would be, currently is scheduled for, is it June of 2021, May or June?
What's in the, the ordinance is that the Appendix J map would remain until the end of May of 2021. We anticipate beginning Phase 2 as we hit the new year and working through Phase 2 through 2020.
And then also, what? So that date is important because today we received an email that also explained a couple of things about the opportunity zone. And one of them had to do with deadlines for investment. And as I understand it, there is one coming up December 31st of this year and another one coming up December 31st of 2021. Could you just explain a little bit more about that? Because that, that is something that I just learned about today.
Sure. Yeah, I will. Disclaimer, I'm not a financial advisor or a tax attorney. But in working with the. Exactly. In working with Yvette Bowden, as well as just kind of monitoring the continued regulations of the IRS, there are several deadlines. The key date in the opportunity zone regulations and the legislation is December 31st of 2026. That's a key date that's in the legislation, and you work backwards off of that date. So if you want to receive the maximum IRS benefit from using an opportunity fund, that's seven years back from December 31st of 2026, which is December 31st of 2019. So if you want to realize the full seven-year benefit of a 15% deferral on your capital gain, you need to make that investment by the end of this year. Then the next deadline is a five-year increment. So that's December of 2021. That would be a 10% deferral on that capital gain. And then after 2026, if you continue to hold that investment for at least 10 years, then you obtain the full benefit. And then there's a period of time that you can, you can continue to hold a piece of property or a business investment that, that there's some complicated and technical pieces related to one additional benefit that you can receive. But the key date is that 2026 timeline and working back from that.
So that, by pure coincidence, aligns with when we would be hoping to finish the community benefits Phase 2 kind of aligns. So, and then the other thing, too, was the industrial zones and how that relates to the opportunity zone and how that, just by its, its nature of, of the industrial zones, how those also kind of limit what can happen.
That's correct. In the industrial zones, the floor area ratio in the industrial zones is really low. It's a .6. And so as a result of that, you don't see a lot of that really intense development in the industrial zones. And actually, what we see on the ground is a lot of times developments in the industrial zones based on other requirements such as open space or parking. They actually hit a limit, and they can't even realize that full .6 FAR. So right now, the industrial zones, the way the zoning is written is it really does lower the development potential in that area. That was a decision that was made as a part of the 1997 rezoning in starting to try and address our jobs, housing imbalance. And so I think our industrial zones right now, based on their zoning, don't allow for a significant amount of redevelopment.
Thank you. So let me, can I just?
Yeah, go ahead.
So let me just sum it up and lay purse, well, in a way that I understand it, which is, because I think it's important because we've heard from a lot of people about opportunity zones. And we think we have done all the work to make sure we get what we need so that any development would comply with the Boulder Valley Comp Plan that we all worked on together, that height above the base is limited, except for those in Appendix J, which are areas that already have, that we already went through area planning for. And the one exception to that is if we're going to get 40% affordable housing, which we have agreed as a community is something we want. So on the off chance somebody wants to give us 40% affordable units, there could be a height exemption. But otherwise, we've pretty much, through the use tables, sort of limited anything that we didn't want to have happen. And that would be why, I think, at least myself, feels fine with lifting the moratorium. Have I got that right?
You have that correct, yeah.
Okay.
I would, I would add that we also put in one of the highest commercial linkage fees in the country. And so that is helping to slow or defer development.
Or get us more housing.
In the opportunity zone. So all of these things, I think, are working together in synergy to make sure that whatever we get is something that we want in terms of the outcome. So we want housing. We don't want so many jobs. We want to get a little more balanced between housing and jobs in this community. So I think.
And a reminder about the overlay zone, which is no existing market-rate affordable can go away.
Right. I do have a question about the manufactured homes communities in the, in the opportunity zone. And we have two of them, two significant ones. And my concern, if you, you know, read about mobile home communities and people wanting to make big investments in these and that they actually are a big investor item, I am very concerned of what might happen if some investor plans to come in and offer a current owner of a manufactured home community a price that he couldn't say no to and what that would do to that community. When we put this moratorium in place, we wanted to make sure that no one who is living in the opportunity zone was displaced. And I'm equally committed to that for those people living in manufactured housing communities. And I'm, my only concern at this point is that we haven't protected those communities as well as we can. Not that they could change from manufactured housing to some other zone or designation, but that somebody might come in and say, "Hey, this is the next Aspen. We could sell you a really nice manufactured home for $1 million," you know? I mean, that's an exaggeration, but.
Okay, can you answer that?
Could, could we get some opinion? And I had sent David Gira email, and I don't see him, so.
Yeah, I think I can start. And then Kurt, if Kurt, you've got anything to follow up on. The first is, and I think you acknowledged it, we have mobile home park zoning.
Right.
The manufactured home zoning. And that really protects to ensure that mobile home parks are not bought, closed, and residents displaced. That the future use of those areas of land are to be for manufactured housing into the future. So I think that's a key protection. And then we've got the other protections that we have for mobile home parks and for their residents in place. And then the last thing is, and again, this is just my understanding of how the opportunity zone funding works, is if you use an opportunity fund to invest in a piece of property, you then need to make an improvement to that property, a 50% improvement to the property. And you have to do that within, it's, it's a 30-month period. And so if someone were to buy it, they still have to do a bunch of improvements to the property and achieve that. And so I'm not sure, based on my understanding of, depending on how much they pay for the property, how much the improvements they would need to make, whether a mobile home park would be an investment that someone would make or not. I don't know that for sure. But if you think of what are the improvements in a mobile home park, it's really just the infrastructure that you could make versus if you bought a building, that you're either building a building or you're doing a major renovation to a building. You have a building as the major asset afterwards. So it's a little bit of a different use. And so that would be some thoughts that I have. Kurt, anything to add?
Great, so this seems like a low risk. Okay, so are we done with that one?
Well, I just had one more question.
Oh, wait, and I'm sorry, Erin.
I need to ask a question, actually, so.
Oh, okay.
It was about making sure that mobile home parks were protected.
Okay. Well, and I just have one more question about manufactured housing. And the, the way that people would be displaced would be through an increase in the lot rents. And Kurt's nodding his head, and so is Adam. But, so that, that is something that I think the, the Mobile Home Park Act enforcement legislation that was passed last year is trying to address through the rulemaking, as I understand it. I don't know if anybody can just. I've read through the role, the, the rulemaking rules. And, and they are trying to address that by giving people the ability to obtain one-year leases as opposed to a month-to-month, which is what most people have right now. So that's one thing. And I mean, I just really want to fully discuss this because we've gotten so much email on it. And, and I think that, well, I learned a lot through poking around on, on, with questions. But one other thing that I learned about today was that the, the opportunity zone legislation actually has a small clause in it that was put in by Senator Cory Booker that helps, that can help small businesses. And if you could explain that a little bit, Chris, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, I can address it at a very high level. And then we can follow up if, if you want more additional information. But there are components where you can, you can invest in a small business, maybe for equipment upgrades or something like that. So I have heard about businesses that are in that next phase of development where they're maybe going from startup to a, an initial phase of maybe production, where they need to do some equipment upgrades, and they need capital for that. There are investors that are supporting small businesses and helping them make that next move. And they're using opportunity funds to help be able to do that.
Thank you.
Cindy?
Oh, go ahead.
If we could get more information on that particular part of the program, that'd be helpful.
Sure.
Well, I was just going to say that I am, I did not support this last time, and I'm not going to support it this time because we have gotten so much information just in sitting up here this evening, right now, that hasn't been available, at least to me. Maybe the rest of you have all had this available to you, that it seems to me that if we could go through some of these things more slowly with the moratorium in place and explain it so that the wider community is able to understand what's happening, it would just be easier for everyone involved. And we would get more buy-in that way rather than seeming like we're doing, just pushing something on. And the mobile home, homes alone, I think, are a huge piece of this in making sure as best we can. And Chris just pointed out, said he'd heard of examples. One of the things that I've been looking for throughout has been examples of where these things have worked, you know, so that we can see that they actually do benefit the community rather than all the horror stories which we have heard, which I've heard plenty of at this point. Most recently, this New York Times article about Michael Milgan's Reno, bending the rules, so to speak, as reported by the New York Times. So I'm really uncomfortable with us just kind of going ahead without, I don't see where the harm is in slowing it down six more months.
You're right.
So I know we're going to have a new council if we decide to do this. I do like the idea of more buy-in because clearly there's upset within the community. I, I understand what was said up here today. I feel comfortable, however, I understand that the wider community may not feel comfortable. So is, just in talking through it, is there a way of pushing? We can still do everything that we've put in place because I think it's really helpful, what we've done. But could we keep the moratorium on for like three more months and have one more session where the new council discusses this and we get some more information? Again, I, I understand. I'm just, again, I like community buy-in, so.
Erin.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, the, the harm of an additional time on the moratorium is the, is the small business owners and property owners that are within the opportunity zone that aren't able to move forward with the plans that they've had for over a year that have, that we have halted in, in their tracks, you know? And, and so I know of multiple folks who had very modest, not opportunity zone funding-related plans, like, for example, somebody who wants to put together a clean tech incubator in a small building, and they've been stopped dead for a year. So I think the, the harm is that. So if we, if we thought if, that there were still major dangers after the changes we've made, then you'd say, "Well, okay, maybe we continue the moratorium." But I think the information that we've gotten from staff as we've learned it through is that, you know, no residents will be displaced. Our mobile home parks are safe from redevelopment. And the, you can't build a taller building unless you do affordable housing. And we just made these use table changes to make sure that any development that comes forward would be in alignment with our comprehensive plan goals. So, I mean, given all of that, I think you do cause harm to perfectly innocent, you know, small businesses and property owners by maintaining the moratorium.
So couldn't we do something? I'm sorry, I don't remember what project this was that we did this on before, but where some issues like that, you know, they come forward and tell us, and we say, "Okay, yeah, you can move forward on a kind of a case-by-case basis, but still keep it in place for three months just so we can get the rest of the community buy-in, but don't hold up important little." Again, I'm just trying to think of some ideas here because, yes, we can pass it tonight. I feel comfortable with it. But again, the community doesn't. And I think that's one of the big things that we try to do. So I, just trying to talk it through. Because I, I don't, also don't want to hold up small businesses because that's incredibly important for our area.
Did anybody else want to speak?
I mean, I guess I'm pretty comfortable that we have put all the protections in place that we set out to do at the get-go. And I think that Erin's point about the small businesses that are caught up in this is probably what I see as the biggest risk of not moving forward is because I know of a couple as well that I think are separate from the ones that you're talking about. So we got a note from a person who is trying to renovate their building right now. And they've had to wait for 10 months. Well, they wanted to make a small renovation. They will have no opportunity zone funding to do this work. And so I feel like we need to move forward with this. We can continue to ask more from staff about other risks that we haven't addressed that we may find later. But I, when Chris was talking about the investment that's being made in the, the physical plant of small companies, that's definitely something I've been reading about as well. But it, it's treated differently than the development of land and buildings. So I think it's got different, different ways that those investments are made and accounted.
So, so if I recall, it seems to me when we were talking about some other development, there, someone else, maybe it was Macy's, was complaining about being held up. And we were told that there was no holdup there in terms of doing interior reconstruction. Is that true, Chris? Is that true, Chris, or are those all stopped as well?
Are you asking specifically with the project at Macy's?
Specifically with, at Macy's, but these others that have come up? And how many are there? I mean, are there two? Are there a dozen? Are there two dozen? This is part of as well doing the assessment of what is it? What will the impact be? How many people are we holding up?
Specific to Macy's, that project submitted an application prior to the moratorium. I have heard examples of property owners or tenants that are looking to do improvements. I don't know who all else is out there because right now we aren't accepting applications. We have had some folks that just, they don't come in to see us right now because they know they can't submit an application and they're just waiting. So I've heard stories, but I don't have a quantifiable number for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bob?
First, I want to thank Mary and Sam for very thoughtfully walking us through and asking some really, really good questions. And that was a good education, certainly for me and probably other members of the community. One thing that I think didn't come out maybe clearly enough in the course of that discussion with Chris here this evening, and I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that we still do have site review criteria on top of all of these things, on top of all the things that we talked about. And so no big project, and we can talk about what triggers a site review, but most big projects do, can be approved unless there's an application, there's a process with the city planning staff and then the city planning board and then ultimately call up by council. And so on top of all the various things that Mary and Sam, I think, did a good job of highlighting, we haven't lost our regulatory authority. We still have our land use authority. We can still determine what meets or doesn't meet our site review criteria, which we've changed, I think, pretty significantly effectively through the change of the use table. So I want us to remember that nothing big can happen in the Opportunity Zone without it coming through here.
So I would just say one thing to that, which is that we've seen lots of development come through here that the community and members of this council are unhappy with, you know, starting right for the reason that the moratorium went in place, the height moratorium went in place in the first place.
Okay. Well, I appreciate this clarifying. Anything else we want to say about Opportunity Zones?
I want to say one more thing.
Okay. So we received another email over the weekend and it was asking questions about San Juan del Centro, which is a community that is just to the east of Orchard Grove and it's HUD and Section 8 apartments. And along with receiving the email, I heard from residents who were concerned that they were going to lose their homes, that they were going to be displaced because the owners were not going to renew the Section 8 and HUD designation. And so I happen to have all of the contact information for all of the leadership of the company that owns them now. They were just purchased last year, related affordable. And so I emailed their vice chairman and I said, "Is this true?" I basically just forwarded that email. And they wrote back and they said, "No, we're going to renew this and we will..." This is what we do. We do affordable housing. So we're not going to be tearing down the buildings and displacing anybody, save for when we are going to be remodeling the apartments. We may temporarily pay for alternative lodging for the people that are, whose apartment is being remodeled. So just wanted to tie a bow on it, just with all of the concerns that people raised over the weekend and through today.
Sam, can I add to that? Thanks for that, Mary, for bringing that up. And just that we got some additional information from staff through them to say that they understand that because of their low-income housing tax credit funding, which was done in 2007, that they have a 30-year requirement to maintain that site as affordable housing. So at a minimum, they have to maintain it through 2037. So we don't necessarily... I believe those folks that you emailed with, but we also don't have to rely upon that. They do have a legal commitment as well.
Okay, good conversation. There is one other item, which is item O.
May I speak to that?
Yep.
In your packet, you had a proposed amendment. Item O relates to the project at 30th and Pearl. As we've gotten close to closing on the financing and the construction, and a couple, two issues arose. The one that's identified in your packet is a city rule that says that the city is not, the city cannot allow any construction over an easement. And so we generally do revocable permits to allow constructions over an easement. In this project, they want to build a parking garage and have what they call paseos or sidewalks on top of it as a walking area. We would normally do that with a revocable permit. We're told that they can't get financing if, with a revocable permit, that they need a permit. So the ordinance would authorize the issuance of permits to allow for the construction of these paseos over the parking garage. After we drafted that, we discovered a second problem, which is that under the federal tax rules, the project is being financed in part with low-income housing tax credits. Under those rules, you cannot have a common amenity that is subject to being paid for, required to pay, paid for and not distributed evenly. This, as you know, the city's code embodies what we call the Sump Principles for Parking, which requires separate unbundled managed paid parking. And in this case, we are asking for, with the proposed ordinance, we give the city manager the authority to waive those requirements when necessary to have affordable housing like this. This doesn't come up all the time, but it has been a problem in other projects. So we're requesting that council pass these two proposed ordinances, this ordinances on emergency and 2O, to make these two changes to help facilitate the construction of this important project.
Any questions about that? Okay, then. Go ahead. Oh, somebody wants to make a motion.
I had brought up, and I don't want to do anything about it tonight, but with regard to the budget, I had brought up a question about the CVB funding and not so much the funding, but the rent that was being paid to the Chamber of Commerce. And it comes to something like $7,100 a month. And I don't think we have enough information to drill down to it, but I would hope that the next council will look into this. And is this really commensurate with what other people pay for space, for their place? And is it comparable to what we have, like maybe down at Boulder Street Mall, you know, in terms of what your square footage price is? It seems a little bit high and I would hope we are getting what we are paying for in return and that it needs to be... I would like to see a little more separation between our putting money into something that supports the city and our revenue, but also be cautious in putting money into the Chamber of Commerce in making sure it's not being more than it needs to be and that they aren't running their own individual campaigns in election season. And I'll just leave it at that.
So, and I'll take it up there. Because I got, and I forwarded it to council, an email from the CVB. This is the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is funded by city tax money, by accommodations tax and food and beverage tax in some areas of the city. So it's the chamber presentation. It's from the CVB saying that as you, thank you, blah, blah, blah. As you requested, this is the presentation the Chamber Public Policy Team gave and it had to do with the chamber's candidate forum and then who they recommended. And this is all posted here with city money, with city supposedly, it looks like it's condoning because of course it doesn't give the other groups, whomever they may be, what their scorecards are. And so this, because this is all city tax money that's doing this kind of thing, I find it really amiss. And having been involved in campaign finance reform for such a long time and having such an interest in it, this is the very kind of thing that we are trying to stop and this has probably gone on before and how it has happened, that we support the chamber in such a big way with the tax money that is paid to rent space for the CVB and then the CVB is touting the chamber's candidates with our tax money. It is intolerable. So I'm just bringing that up and I would hope that the campaign finance people in the city would look at this. It seems to me this is highly illegal. Mr. Carr?
Cindy, you see that they have all the candidates listed and they just list who their endorsements were?
Yes, exactly. I mean, this is exactly it. It is one community advocating for the persons whom they have chosen and I do not think that it is sound policy for city tax money to be used for that.
But Cindy, they have all of the endorsements here, not just theirs. In fact, they don't have an endorsement here.
The chamber ballot scorecards is what I'm looking at and I looked at them earlier. I'm not looking at them right now. I'm just looking...
So I see the chamber endorsement roundup on page four of the attachment. Well, we will certainly look at it if you'd like.
That's my concern.
Happy to do that.
Is that this is not something that should be in this particular place, in this particular way, funded by city money, tax money.
Okay, I have Erin and then Bob.
Yeah, so just speak up a little bit since I'm one of the candidates on the ballot here this year. But just that no nonprofit is allowed to endorse candidates and so no candidates have been endorsed by any nonprofit, including the Boulder Chamber. I've seen, they, along with a number of other organizations, have put out scorecards where they say, "What do the different candidates think about different issues?", right? So a scorecard is not an endorsement. So anyway, I don't know about all the rest of the materials, but I just want to make that clear that while various organizations have endorsed, that are political advocacy organizations, nonprofits, including the Boulder Chamber, have not endorsed same candidates.
Okay, we have Bob? Sorry.
I just wanted to come back to Lisa's point. I'm currently the council liaison to CVB. I don't know if I'll be that in the future, but what I will do, Lisa, in response to your question, is ask the CVB to prepare a memo for council, kind of summarizing in greater detail than what we got last week about the rent and doing some comparables to other rent arrangements, just to make sure that it's market rate.
No, and that would be great. And as we discussed last week, it'd also be good to get CVB working with the city and the Sister Cities Organization and the J.C.'s or people who are...
Rotary, yeah.
The Rotary in improving, you know, access. So I'm happy with that. I just thought this seems like a lot of rent and so it would be good just to get that.
Great, thanks.
So I just wanted to point out, Erin, I hear what you say, but what they do is identify all of the candidates' positions and specifically those who agree with the chamber's position. So, I mean, I look at this and there are a lot of greens on there and there are, for some candidates, and then there are a lot of reds and there are some golds, which is apparently not applicable. So all I'm saying is that this, again, this is city tax money, that this has appeared to the wider public and I do not think that it is correct to be doing this.
And that's a perfectly valid opinion. I just want to be clear that there's just not an endorsement, okay? Because I believe you used the term endorsement.
It's a fine line and that's why we had this Campaign Finance Reform Group meet for the period of time they met when this council was first seated, was to try and make some distinctions and perhaps that needs to be reconvened.
So Cindy, do you have a proposal with regards to this? Are you just bringing it to our attention?
Yeah.
Do you want Tom to do anything about it?
I'd like Tom to look into it, perhaps see, I mean, again, see how close...
Or the clerk, whichever you want to do.
Right. Legal clerk and whether or not we need to revisit this because this obviously, whether or not it is a conflict of interest, it doesn't smell good. It certainly gives the appearance of one. And again, using city money. So it's my contrarian last evening.
All right. Okay, and on that note, okay, so noted and maybe the next council will want to look and see if they feel like this is something that needs to be addressed in terms of campaign. Because, you know, each year, new stuff crops up and we have to decide whether or not we feel like it feels right, given our campaign finance loss. So with that, this has been a long discussion about a long consent agenda that's got a lot of stuff in it. So with that, is there anything more to be said on any of these items? Otherwise, I'd like a motion.
I move the consent agenda.
I will second it. With the...
With the changes?
The amendments that we've made to E, I mean, to D, to D and 2O. Okay. Do either of you want to say anything more?
No. As you said, we had a thorough discussion. It's a pretty meaty consent agenda, but it's good that this council is getting the work done, right?
And I'll just say, I want to thank all of you who have been raising issues and bringing them to our attention. I think our final product is much the better because of it. So with that...
Okay, so roll call vote. We start with Councilmember Brockett.
Aye.
Carlisle?
Aye, except for item 2F, GHIJKL, which has to do with the budget. And 2N, which is the Opportunity Zone. And 2D, the ethics question was one of the amendments, so I'm good with that.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Morzell?
Yes.
Nagel?
Aye.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yates?
Aye.
Young?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Carlisle, nay on 2F through L and 2N.
Okay. One, two, three, four. We need some of you to come back. We need five, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and say it. You have one call up this evening, a youth review for 954 North Street.
Okay, as soon as we have a quorum, we will see if anybody wants to speak to that. Okay, council, does anybody want to call up or have questions about 945 North? No. No? Okay, moving on.
Your public hearing for tonight, the second reading, ordinance 8361, adding Chapter 11, Police Oversight, to Title II.
All right, thank you. I would like to start by thanking everyone for being here. I'd like to thank all of my wonderful task force colleagues for the many hours of work that they've put into this project. I would like to thank our facilitator, Dr. Carolyn Love, who is with us tonight, and all of the city staff for the assistance that we've given us.
And can you introduce yourself?
Yeah.
Oh, it's coming. Okay, excellent.
Yes. So for those of you who have not met me yet, my name is Todd Conklin. I'm currently a student at CU. I'm a member of the task force. I have been asked to represent the task force as you move forward in the second reading of the ordinance tonight in hopes of final adoption of this ordinance. So as a reminder, the task force has recommended for your consideration an auditor-monitor oversight model combined with a police oversight panel made up of 11 diverse community members. The ordinance before you outlines the following. The city will hire an auditor-monitor to accept complaints involving police employees, monitor internal investigations to ensure objective, thorough, and high-quality investigations, and develop recommendations to improve police services and policies. They will also have access to all police data in order to carry out these functions. The initial auditor will be hired and held accountable to the city manager and will be housed physically in a location that is independent of the police department. Additionally, the auditor-monitor will act as a liaison and provide staff support to the police oversight panel, but they will not be a voting member of the police oversight panel and they will not be a member. They will strictly be a liaison to that panel. They will also work to build relationships with the community and the police department. So the second part of this model is the police oversight panel. This panel will be made up of 11 diverse community members and also one representative from the police department that will act as a liaison. The representative from the police department will also not be a member and they will be not voting on anything related to the police oversight panel. This panel will review completed investigations and give recommendations based on the disposition of the investigation and the level of discipline that should be carried out. It will also analyze data in collaboration with the auditor-monitor to make policy, program, and training recommendations to the chief of police. It will also provide feedback on the performance of the auditor-monitor. It will provide forums to hear community concerns regarding incident-specific police actions, broader questions regarding policing, and they will seek to foster healthy community relations between the police and the community. Going forward with this process, we want a phased implementation process. Given the level of detail that is going to be required and the complexity of the forthcoming implementation, we will continue forward as a task force with an implementation committee. Task force members who have agreed to participate through the phased implementation include myself, Sean Ray Pasalacqua, Sophia Pelikanos, Mike Rafique, John Gifford, Michelle DaNae, Michelle Simpson, Christian Gardner Wood, two police representatives who are Carleen Hoffman and Pam Gignac. It is also anticipated by us as a task force, the staff who have been supporting this process to date will also continue their involvement, as well as members of the police department and staff.
Todd, so that sounds like most people. How many people aren't re-upping?
Off the top of my head, maybe around three or four.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, and most of us are continuing on with implementation. So implementation details will include, but will not be limited to, development of a job description for all relevant parties, recruitment plans, and evaluation framework for the auditor... for the auditor-monitor, classification of complaints for police employees, makeup and manner of appointment of the oversight panel selection committee, standards of timeliness in investigation review and outcome, oversight panel decision-making process, term lengths and staggering of appointments, and further consideration of the role Boulder City Council and Human Relation Commission in the police oversight framework. So communities that endeavor to implement community police oversight models typically require 18 months to two years to successfully implement whichever model benefits their community. Given the level of detail required to consider, the task force recommends that in addition to the passage of the ordinance, that we move forward as an implementation committee, which we have already taken care of that part. And then, we expect these changes with implementation to carry on into 2020. And then, after we have done that process, we will come back to council, bring those changes, and then amend the original ordinance as needed to be. So, thank you for all of your support throughout this process. We appreciate that. If anyone has any questions, I can take those now.
That was a great presentation, Todd. Thanks very much for that. Two questions, I'll just give them both to you. You mentioned how long it normally takes. Can you tell me how long you guys think this one will take? And then also, will you have some check-ins with us along the way?
So it's hard to say how long it will take, because we haven't yet started the implementation process. We're going to get up and running on that in about the next two weeks, we assume. And then, once we have that, we can probably send a memo to council estimating how long we think it will take.
Okay.
And then, what was your second question?
And then just, are you going to check in with us periodically along the way?
Sure, yes, we will.
That'd be great, thanks.
Erin?
Todd, thanks very much for that presentation and all your work on this issue. So just to be completely clear, does your task force recommend the adoption of the ordinance as it's stated?
Yes, we do.
Great, thank you.
Lisa, and then Mary.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank you for your presentation, and I want to thank you and the group for the amount of time and the depth that you've gone into this issue, so.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
And we're going to have a public hearing here before everybody gushes. Mary?
Yeah, we can do that now, too.
We can gush before and after, I guess.
Okay, thank you. It was a great presentation. I do have a question about the letter that we received from the NAACP, and if you could address their concerns.
Sure, so we also debated that letter as a task force, and then in conjunction with city staff, I believe we sent a response to that letter to the NAACP. Off the top of my head, I don't remember all of the specific considerations they asked for. Do you have any specific questions regarding that?
Specifically, the recommendation that the final decision rests with the police chief.
Yes, so we debated that at length as a task force during our last meeting, and what we agreed upon was that we want to stand behind the model that we proposed to council and what is in the city ordinance. So that is what we will stand behind in regards to that.
Thank you.
Okay, I was going to say, do you want to expound upon that?
Well, in the model that we originally proposed, the final decision was going to be left with the police chief, in that the investigation would go through the auditor-monitor, who would then review it, and it would also go to the police oversight panel, who would review the disposition, give a recommendation on that, and the discipline, give a recommendation on that, and then it would go to the police chief. That is what we decided as a task force, and that is what we believe is the best option, and we are comfortable with that.
Great, that's helpful.
So that raises another question for me. So, one of the objectives of this panel is to increase, restore, better trust in police. And so it seems to me that when the police chief is left with the final decision, there is some element of not being able to carry forth on that objective. So, could you just comment on that, please?
Sure, so in designing the police oversight panel, we want to make it as accountable and as accessible to the community as they can be. And we think that, in the process we have designed, that these investigations are going to be so good and so thorough and so well-done that when the police chief makes a recommendation, we believe that they will be making the correct recommendation, as also determined by the panel and that auditor-monitor as well. And then, in addressing what you said, you wanted to be able to reach out to the community and have a good relationship. One of the other roles we have defined for the police oversight panel is that they're going to be holding community forums, they're going to be out talking to people, educating people about what they're doing, what needs to be done, what the goals are, and we think in doing that, that we will create a healthy relationship between the police, the community, and this panel as well.
And so that raises another question about the, I think that's great, maintaining the relationship with the community and doing the outreach. I think that will go a long way. But ultimately, what you want is to be able to somehow measure that the trust has been bettered, and how, have you had any discussion about that or any ideas on how to do that?
So that mainly sounds like an implementation question. Once we get to the specific portion where we're determining the role of the police oversight panel, that will be specifically worked out, and then we'll send updates to council regarding that.
Thank you. Can I just ask a clarifying question? The recommendation of the panel and auditor-monitor will be public, right? So everybody will know whether or not that feedback was taken into account in the final decision, correct?
So I believe it's made public by the PSRP now, and if that is the case, then we would also like to continue that practice of making that public.
So we'll have a chance to see how that goes. Sam?
So, was there any discussion, to Mary's point, was there any discussion of doing statistically valid surveys of both the community as a whole, but then potentially underrepresented groups within the community, to try and do that perception piece that Mary's talking about, so that there could be a baseline established? And then, as the process runs over the course of many years, we could track what the perceptions are. Are they changing in a positive way? Are they going the other way? Did you guys talk about any of the details around that?
So that will also be an implementation question, but that is going to be absolutely critical, is constant outreach to community. So whatever form that takes in the question you asked, we will absolutely be doing some form of that, of constantly reaching out to the community to gauge how they feel.
Okay, great. The only point I would make for you to take back is we've been having pretty good experience with statistically valid surveys and a few of the processes we've been running, and so this might be another one that's right for that. I wouldn't know how to design it myself, but I'm sure there are people who could.
Well, and I'm curious, Jane, we do, do we get at any of that, how people are feeling about the police department in our regular, our periodic statistical survey?
Every other year, we have a community survey, and we do get that information, and the police department usually comes out very positively. I think that this kind of survey that you're talking about would need to go deeper than that. I don't want to say that our survey is superficial, but it's just asking sort of an easy question, and I don't think that we have broken it down based on demographics. I think we probably could do that, but I just feel like more questions would really get at the perception, who feels that way, and the basis for it. So I think the idea of a different survey would be the right thing.
Great, that's helpful. Other questions? Well, thank you, Todd. I think we're going to open it up to the public hearing.
You have three people.
Three people?
Yes, the first one is Mark Bliley.
Oh, Mark. So every speaker will get three minutes.
Hello, council. Officer Mark Bliley, union president of Boulder Police Department. I first want to wish those who are leaving before us happy endeavors on your new chapter in your life, so I sincerely wish you the best. I want to speak on behalf of over 180 sworn officers at the Boulder Police Department as we move into the next phase of the oversight. I know that a lot of work has gone into getting to where we are today, and I want to recognize the task force for a lot of layers that they had to learn and research and get through to where we are today in such a short period of time. And I know they referenced, Todd referenced a few minutes ago about how this normally, when it's all said and done, can take up to 18 months. So with that being said, there's still a lot of work ahead of us, and I want to acknowledge that work that is before us, but not only as a challenge, but as an opportunity in working with the police department. One of the things that, in this ordinance, on the very first page, is, on this proposal ordinance, it states in Section 211.1 and Section E, in part, not reading the whole thing, that council recognizes that further work is needed to implement this chapter. So I am up here today as a reminder, and as we recognize as a police department, my membership, that there is still a lot of work to do. Because in effort with that direction, again, we look for this as an opportunity with the subcommittee, and having a couple of our officers involved, myself included, when necessary, as one of the persons who, subject matter expert, those kind of things on these areas. The Boulder Police Officers Association and the Boulder Police Union has identified several areas that we have concerns about how it's initially put together, but also knowing that these things should be worked out in time, those details that will allow us, as long as we are given that time, and not rushed to any kind of final outcome in this. We also know in closing that this is a collective effort. This is not only involving police, task force, but the community as well, instilling some of those things you talked about on the survey. But it's also for our officers who have to live with the final outcome product that will, as in this last oversight thing, was in place for over a couple decades. So we want, we know it's something that we have to be comfortable in knowing that we can live with, again, for the officers and for the community as a whole. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up is Darren O'Connor.
Hi, council. I want to reiterate what Mark shared about wishing you the best, those of you who are leaving council, some of you after a very long time. Thank you for your service. And I also want to thank the task force members, Todd and Dr. Love, who are here tonight, and all those who are wisely sitting at home, probably warm, I hope, for their hard work. We, as the NAACP, did send some concerns with the ordinance as we read it, and the feedback we got mainly addressed either misunderstandings or clarified things that personally made me feel better about it. For example, that the final police oversight panel will not have a voting member who is a police officer or the auditor-monitor. And while we, I think, still disagree on the final position that the police chief should make final decisions, we certainly recognize that they put in a lot of work and come to that decision quite knowledgeable. My concern personally is that, you know, we have a very good model of this in Denver. It's a very similar oversight model. They have an office of independent monitor, and the citizens had to go to the polls and change the law there because police were stymying his efforts to do his job. Now, I don't know if that will happen here, but we know it's happened. We know that in Denver, he has put out recommendations, and the police haven't followed it. I think there's a belief here that that just won't happen. We'll just have to see. I'm concerned that the last time this was discussed, or in the public hearing, that the chief of, the interim chief of police felt comfortable saying that his officers were scared, scared by this process, scared by the oversight, when this whole effort is really about getting community comfort with the oversight of the police, and I would hope that they would welcome that. And that, just looking at the incredible work that this task force did, that we should all see a model, and I think you all do, and I appreciate how much you guys have all really backed this effort. There's been so much support and understanding of their hard work that I really appreciate all of you have given that, and I think our police ultimately, I just don't understand how they can be scared of the community they serve, asking them to treat that community fairly. That's it, thank you.
Just have a quick comment. I would just make the comment or the observation that change is often scary, and so it may be perhaps not a fear of the community so much as a fear of what the process will look like. And so I think it'll be great work for everyone to do together with the task force to be able to make sure that we get an outcome that really is serving our community. And so I just wanted to put out the observation, it could be a fear of change.
Thanks, Sam. Councilman Weaver, sorry. I also want to say that I will be licensed on November 5th and would be happy to provide independent review, if you need it, of the ethics issue. I'll be qualified, thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Sammy Lawrence, the fourth.
I got to say, I got to say in the very beginning, that's one of the first times you called me at the fourth. I got to appreciate that, because as I've said before, I'm not my father, nor my father's father, nor my father's father's father. I am the fourth. So that being said, hello, city council. Nice to see everyone today. Got to jump in the same bandwagon again and thank everybody that has been a part of this task force. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Love, as well as thank you. It's very amazing to see the work that has been done. I haven't been able to follow all the way because timeframes change, and with that, disabilities show up a little later in the day, so not really a good idea to be out that late. That being said, earliest year, the people of this city cried out and demanded change, a shift from draconian escapade of allotting the BPD to handle investigating its own. Zaid Atkinson, Michelle Rodriguez, Kelly Clark, and I are all examples from this year alone of their failures. Likewise, some of you that sit opposite of me are allotting this type, are part of allotting this type of behavior. In response to this outcry, 13 members of this community, coupled with the assistance from officers and an amazing facilitator, have created unto us these models. I thank everyone involved in this matter. That being said, we go from April to October to the recent past to see our leaders act so acquiescent as PD reps emphasize resistance to full and independent oversight. We have already decided as a community that our PD cannot be trusted to investigate themselves, nor make those calls. We, as a community, have the scars to back our stance. True healing starts when you're independent of the things hurting you. So stop getting in the way of our healing. PD, you have had too much comfort being a helicopter parent without taking the time to listen to your community, your children, the people you protect and you serve. Likewise, to members of our community, we need to work together. I know this is difficult right now. This is an opportunity for us, the traumatized community, to work together to start healing. I believe in all of you to do what's right. Thank you for your time, and again, thank you, everyone, for your support in this. One more person is too much, and I say that with my own body. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Segal.
Lynn Segal, 538 Dewey. After the Elk experience, I have very little trust of the police in Boulder. It's going to be a high bar, because I tried to go to the trial, and I was thrown out of the trial for asking the air conditioning to be turned down, and I happened to ask the next expert witness, who was the PhD in exercise physiology or something, Stan Garnett's star witness, and I just saw him as an authority figure, and I said, "Do you think they could turn the heat down in here?" You know, it was, or, no, the air conditioning, it was really cool. It was the summer, and I can't bring all my warm clothes in the summertime to the courtroom, and my panniers won't fit it that much. And my panniers won't fit it that much in my bike. So I was thrown out and I wanted to watch that trial for a week. And I'd already put in a day and a half. And so I'm real pissed off. It reminds me of Stan Garnett and Jill Grano and J. Hebb and Fru House. The whole thing just makes me real upset all over again. Makes me think way back to Leferd Inc. Cindy remembers him, probably. The Leferd Inc. that, you know, ripped off the city people, the Colorado building, and then left on his helicopter, you know, escaping with his girlfriend to be picked up later on. So I don't have a lot of faith in this community for justice, but then I'm from the coast. And community policing and restorative justice, I've heard talk about it for 30 years, and it's just a lot of talk. And when I try to intervene at all with the police, I get really treated badly and I don't appreciate it. And so I hope that your police oversight thing is going to work out. Because as it stands, I'm not going to call the police, not if my life depended on it in this town. Not after the next door thing, that's some Halloween deal of a lynched person on 11th or 10th and Delwood. And, you know, there's some serious people around this town that I've got some really demented ideas and this is not a Halloween thing, you know? There's serious issues here, and I'd like to depend upon my police, but not as it stands. So good luck.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, that's all that signed up. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion then. Oh, you.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
All right.
If I can find it. I move that we, I move that we adopt ordinance 8361, amending Title II by adding a new Chapter 11, Police Oversight, DRC 1981 pertaining to the composition, duties, and powers of a new city organization related to civilian oversight of the police.
Second. Would you like to speak to that?
I think that this has been a good change, a good move. I'm extremely grateful to the task force. I think they've done such a thorough job in a very short period of time. I do trust that our police will be taking up, as they should be, their end of the bargain here and look forward to seeing the positive change that will be happening in the community.
And I would just add, I think we've talked in the past, it bears repeating just how thankful we are to the task force for all the work they put in and for really, I think, embodying, coming together of the community and really working through the issues. And watching you last, I guess it was a study, was a study session, how mindful you were about the differences of opinions even within your group and how you treated the minority opinion within your recommendations was, was really exemplary and eye-opening. So anyhow, I'm very pleased that so many of the task force members are willing to stay on and help with implementation. I think that that is, well, it's a credit to all of you. And I appreciate the, the way that you are addressing some of these, these are tricky issues. These are hard issues and you're doing it, I think, very respectfully with the police department and trying to have a, craft something that will work for them as well so that it will actually be embraced and lead to meaningful evolution of racial bias and racial equity in our community. So I guess I just salute you. I think my understanding is, as you guys figure out implementation details, that if need be the next council, we'll probably have to amend the ordinance to add in all those details. And I also hope that in addition just to addressing how complaints are handled, that the panel could end up helping to further community engagement and development of the relationship between the community and the police by making recommendations of how that might be done beyond just the complaint process, but actually enhancing relationships. So, thank you. I saw Mary and then Sam and then Erin.
So never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change police process. So thank you guys very much for your very hard work. And I completely agree with what both Cindy and Suzanne have said. Your hard work was exemplary and the amount of time in which you did it was just mind-boggling. And it was a well-selected group of people and a well-selected facilitator. So thank you very much. I just have, just a few things to perhaps have you think about as you go through the implementation process. And that would be to consider a, you know, I asked about the final decision resting with the police chief. And I was trying to think of a, I do have the, it's the appearance of, I think, a lot of community members may not memorize what the process of the panel looks like and trust that the outcomes have been thoroughly vetted. So one thing that I would suggest that you consider looking at is to provide the police chief and the auditor monitor with equal standing. So in, and what I was thinking about was, in the city, we have a process by which we approve area plans, getting a little wonky here, but where the, the planning board and the city council have equal say on, on voting, have, they have equal power. And, and what happens is if one body doesn't agree fully with, with the plan, then they make some suggestions and it goes to the other body. And that goes back and forth until they resolve. And so that might be something to consider, that kind of, of model. And then the other thing I wanted to suggest was, I mentioned trust. And I think it's going to be very important to provide some metric. It's probably going to be more qualitative than quantitative. So just really have a look at that. And then the other thing that might be helpful would be to run the Atkinson case through the process and see where it would end up, given this new model, or any of the other cases, to see how, how it works. So those are just some suggestions. And thank you once again.
Sam.
So I just want us to go back to the weeks after March 1st and realize, at that time, it was so much deserved community anger about what had occurred. And, you know, sitting here in these chambers on the 18th and hearing that, I'm just so grateful that we've gotten to this place so far because it's a huge amount of progress. It's obviously been praised for your work and I agree with all of that. But I just want to say, as an overall community, and not just the task force, I feel like there have been some very difficult conversations that needed to be had, and they have been, not completely had, but they've been started. And this feels like a really good place to have arrived at, given where we started and given the community anger and frustration and unhappiness. And now we're at this place where you have done a whole bunch of work that has got us this great work product now, and I'm hopeful that it can continue on as thoroughly and positively because I really do feel like it's moved the community along as, as a community. And so I know that the conversations will still be tough, but that's okay. You know, the, the good work requires tough conversations. And so I appreciate you engaging in them. Look forward to seeing where we're going to go and thanks for all your work.
Yes, so I want to agree with everything that my colleagues have said. Sam, that was very well put just now. And I also wanted to thank the NAACP for their contributions to this process. You know, Mary and I sat down with Darren and Jude and Annette from the NAACP to select the task force panelists. And I think, and it was a very productive process, although challenging sometimes. But I think the, the folks on the task force have done an extraordinary job. I mean, really, I hadn't imagined it would, the quality of the work would be so high. And so look very much forward to passing this tonight. You know, we have a, like Sam said, we've, we've come a couple of important steps down a road towards rebuilding and improving trust with the community, particularly folks of color, African-Americans in the community. This is a long journey. And this is one step that we're taking tonight. I think it's an important one, but we have many more steps. And I'm, you know, committed personally to doing what I can to help continue down that path.
Okay. Well, with that.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. Councilmember Carlisle.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Marzelle.
Yes.
Nagel.
Aye.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yates.
Aye.
Young.
Yes.
Rocket.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all so much.
Your council priorities update is next.
Okay. Can I borrow your call?
Yeah, I'm telling to look in particular at the housing protection, which they probably don't understand demolition, but demolition doesn't mean tear down completely. It can mean hollowing out of the shell. So, you know, we asked Chris about that.
Right.
Do you remember?
I meant to say this during the discussion about the opportunity zone.
Maybe, yeah.
We might be home by 10 o'clock.
No, we're going to go drink.
Priorities.
I had a conversation with Scott Holden today.
Okay.
And he really confirmed that as much as said it, what this council has done has really dampened down.
That's great.
No, and, and, and he said, that's great. And, and he said, yeah, he agreed. I mean, he said, yeah. And, and he said, I can do other things, like beautiful.
Do we want to get going with this or are we waiting? Or Suzanne?
I think we could get started.
So CAC and council requested that we end our amazing two-year council session with a discussion of council priorities update and future priorities discussion. So Tom could turn to the next slide. So as a result of our conversations in the first retreat that we did in 2018 and the one that we did in January of 2019, we had a number of priorities. We've created a slide that shows where we are. You've completed most of them. Bill Cowan did ask me to talk a little bit about the Vision Zero one we've indicated as complete. And of course, the truth about the substance of Vision Zero was it will never be complete. We're all, we'll always be working on it. But we marked it as complete because we wanted to finish the transportation master plan and the safety report that we did give to council. So those specific things that we had indicated in the council retreats early on have been completed, but we will always be working on Vision Zero. A couple of the items are in progress and in the course of the time that we were working with council, we ended up breaking up the community benefit and the use tables into two different phases, but the first phase is in fact complete. And then the, the one item that I think remains on hold, I guess I'll say, is the large homes and lots, which was actually added at the retreat in 2019. And so we didn't have a full two years to do that one. But I have to say that council rocked it in this two-year period of time and that you've completed most of your priorities. So if you want to discuss that, you can do that. And then the next discussion will just be led by the mayor regarding your 2020 suggested priorities.
So I had one clarification, which was, I'm not presuming to tell the next council what their priorities are. What I meant was for us to do a handoff of issues that you will inherit. And you will do with them what you will, but some of these things are already in motion. And I wanted to just have a little bit of a community conversation and handoff because, yes, they're going to land in your lap and I, some of them are really important and they're pending. So I think that's more what I wanted to make sure we did. So there's a, well, let's talk about the body of work that we, that's on this slide and then maybe we can talk about some additional things that we also, some of us wrote in about. Bob.
Just want to make more of an observation and a recommendation to the next council. I think these were great goals and I think a lot of it was accomplished in the last couple of years. I think we should be very proud of what we've accomplished. A couple of the topics, and Jane called it out in Vision Zero, and I can think of some other things like maybe climate commitment, are really ongoing things. And I would recommend, while I think it's important to keep those front and center, Vision Zero and climate commitments and other things, I think it'd be probably helpful for the next council to have distinct, measurable, achievable, concrete goals so we can check the box. So I mean, climate commitment, for example, that will be, sad to say, that will be something that will probably be on council's agenda for many, 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 many years. And so it'd be nice to break that down into achievable, actionable items so that we can look back, whoever looks back two years from now or four years from now and say, all right, these are the five things we wanted to get done. For example, the climate commitment, we got four of them done or all five of them done. So I just think we should be a little bit more actionable or the next council should be a little bit more actionable. I think these are, these are great things and, and I'm really happy with what we got done, got done.
And there's some of the piece, well, anyhow, I'll delve back in. Do others people want to speak to this? Okay, I'm going to wax a little bit. A bunch of these things are pretty complicated, had been on, had been ideas for a while. And I guess I just want to salute the work that went into crafting that. I mean, the community benefit piece, the site review criteria, the use tables, I mean, that's hard, slogging sort of work and, and really, really important. So, and some of those have a phase two that I think is really important. And I guess I would urge the next council to get those across the finish line because they're well on their way. I am sorry that we didn't get to large homes and lots. I think probably, that probably needs to be reframed in a way with bite-sized pizzas, pizzas, or pizzas, if you wish. That can be a pizzas, or pizzas, if you wish, that can be addressed. But I still think that's an issue. I also want to, I think there's certain issues that we should also make sure to keep the public engaged on and updated on, ones that are spanning multiple years. I think municipalization is one of those. It's a priority, a lot of work is going into it, a lot of money's going into it. And it's very important, and I think the next year and a half, I wish it was just the next year, but the next couple of years are going to be really important. And I think it's incumbent upon the next council to ensure that the community discussion about that happened in a very public way, in a very inclusive way. Okay, maybe I'll quit talking for a little bit. Okay, I saw Lisa and then Mary, and then Sam.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna concur with you, Suzanne, that there's been an incredible amount of work, not only by council, but by the staff who has supported us and by the community who has followed this. And even though we have large homes and large lots on hold, there is an incredible amount of work that our staff put into, and I would hope that doesn't go away and that, that work was, was well done and that maybe it has to be done in different bite chunks or pizzas. But I think it's something that there needs to be more of a robust conversation by the community. But, and, and like I said earlier tonight, none of these projects get done by just turning a switch on, and that they're really complex and that you have multiple players, multiple aspects of it that you have to consider before you can go to the next step. So anyway, I'm good with this. I didn't bring up anything in this, this regard, and I'll just leave my comments till later. I did bring up a issue of indexing so people can more easily, and I didn't mean the council members, I meant the, the community can more easily follow our different topics and follow them sequentially so they know where things are and can easily put their finger on them and find them.
Mary?
So I'll concur with Suzanne's assessment, and hopefully it'll be a smooth handoff. But I agree with Lisa, too. A lot of these have taken a long, long time. But I also think that, this is my third council, and this is probably by far the council that has accomplished the most, in my view. And also, in less than 50 meetings, my first--
What, really?
Yeah. My first council, we had so, we had, we had gone over 50 meetings in September.
Yeah.
And I remember staying up till 1:30 a lot. And, and I don't remember this level of accomplishment. So kudos to this council and to staff who supported all this. I mean, you guys do the heavy lifting, and the amount of creativity in the timeframes that were provided, I think, was just outstanding. So big thanks to staff. And I also want to say, you know, to, also to Lisa's point about turning the switch, the community benefit project, and it's only the phase one, but that's been something that I've been advocating for, for 12 years. So it was very gratifying to see that finally happen. And, and the site review criteria updates that I have been going to retreat after retreat after retreat until it finally happened. So anyway, I, I, yeah, we'll talk more about the other priorities.
So I just want to thank staff. This is a very planning-heavy set of accomplishments that we got, which meant that our planning staff had to really prioritize and then tick down through the things. Where Mary has been looking for community benefit and putting that into site plan review, I've been very supportive of that. But I have been wanting to see the use tables and standards had a look at because it's been 20 years since that has last happened, and a lot changes in 20 years. And so just kudos to staff for that. I'm also pleased that we have the middle-income down payment pilot in front of the voters. You know, they will speak. We, maybe, I could have done a slightly better job at the ballot language phrasing. I didn't catch an error I could have. But still and all, it's there, and the substance is there, and we will see if the community is willing to let us borrow money to get people into middle-income housing. I just want to call out, you know, the South Boulder Creek Flood Mitigation Project. That is going to land in the next council and then the council after that. I mean, realistically, if you look at both the permitting and the construction time, that's going to push us out, you know, a couple councils. And so the next council will have to look at that project as something that we need to move forward with all due speed. But it's a design and engineering project, and it's going to require Army Corps of Engineers, EPA, the state dam safety engineer, you know, there's a lot of layers to what is going to happen in that South Boulder Creek Flood Mitigation Project. And there's partners that we don't have direct control of in CDOT, in CU, and so on. So there will have to be some finesse in that one. But I think overall, staff has really done good, this council's done pretty good, and, you know, that's a long list of stuff.
All right, then we're gonna go to some--
I was gonna follow on that a little bit. Yeah, and I'll just, just quickly, I'll call out the Open Space Master Plan, which was a process that I thought went extremely well. Mary and I, of course, served on the subcommittee for many, many months, and so I thought the engagement with the community was fantastic on that. I'm proud that we all got that done. And just, just, I think the one that we have made the, the less progress than I would have liked to particular is that South Boulder Creek Flood Mitigation. And so I think it's really, as you say, Sam, incumbent on the next council to keep that on track and move it forward and get the protection for our residents that they really need.
Okay, I want to mention some of the other things. Just one more thing.
So I was just gonna mention one more thing. And that is that we're finally doing another major sub-community plan. And I came out of the North Boulder Sub-Community Plan, and I think it's an incredible way to do planning on including the community and really getting a good view and vision for what the community wants in that part, in their part of town. And so I'm very excited that we have that, and it'll be the second sub-community plan. So that's all I wanted to mention, is that I think it's very exciting and that it will be a heavy lift, and it'll be really incumbent that we keep and get involved, the community, so that they're very much involved in what the shaping of their community is going to look like.
Okay, so I wanted to launch, did you want to respond to that?
Well, no, no, I just realized, the one that we haven't mentioned is the Housing Advisory Board, which has been a long, long-held goal. And I see actually two members of the Housing Advisory Board out in the audience. Hi, y'all. Thanks for all the great work that you've been doing since that board was formed. So Lisa, of course, is a priority of yours for very long.
Yeah, so I'm really--
They're doing good work.
Thank you, Aaron, for bringing that up. I'm very excited. It's, it's been seated, and it is operating and operating well. So thank you.
So some additional topics, not on this list that the new council will inherit, that I just wanted to hold up. In addition to CU South, which of course has an asterisk next to it and a whole annexation issue, and Alpine Balsam. But we just saw a piece of the racial equity work we're trying to do, and it goes deeper than that. And I hope the new council can somehow get immersed in that, and, because I think that's an important journey we're on as a community. As related, but different part of that is, is that we're in formal tribal consultations with, I forget how many tribes, a whole bunch of tribes--
13.
13. And the tribes are coming back here in the spring, and will take the next step together. But that's important, and will involve, I think, most of council participated in the last meetings. And it's pretty profound, moving stuff. But I, that's something that I think is important, and it'll be on the work plan. We also primus promised, the library commission, that we would have a robust discussion about how to fund the library long-term, and whether it should be via district or some other mechanism. So I think it's important that we honor that. Another project that's out there, ready for attention, regardless of how you feel about the particulars, but University Hill still needs a catalyst project to help move the commercial district forward. And I would encourage the new council to not, again, regardless of whether you like the one on the table, that needs some good attention and to be moved forward. Just a couple more things. I hope Diagonal Plaza gets some attention. And maybe, whether it's an area plan or something, but I do think that maybe that issue is ripening, and we have a chance to move forward. The Climate Mobilization Action Plan is off to a really great start. There were hundreds of people that came to the kickoff, and that will be a joyful, even though the topic is serious, I think there's a lot of energy in the community around that, and the next council will get to participate and adopt that. And as part of that, one of the hopeful things is the carbon sequestration piece to that. Couple more. One that I think could fall through the cracks if we're not careful, but is, we can't begin talking about soon enough, is the 2020 ballot. And we are a part of a regional affordable housing strategy, and we're in discussions with other municipalities in the county about how to fund that. And how the ball was left on the court was that it's likely that we'd want to do something on the 2020 ballot, and maybe that would be connected to transportation, or maybe that wouldn't. But that's a really important conversation, and it always sneaks, the ballot always sneaks up on us. And I guess, anyhow, that involves a lot of other players, and I hope somehow that the new council will start early in the spring on that one. And then at some point, oh, sorry, I have a couple more. One is, there's a lot of, in the municipalities around us and our, basically our neighbors, there's a lot of new council members, there's new councils. And we have a tradition of sometimes having dinners or breakfasts with neighboring cities. And I guess I would encourage the new council to embrace that tradition, all the more so because there's a lot of turnover out there. And there's a chance for new partnerships and new relationships. And we just started that with Naropa University, restarted it, I think we started it. And anyhow, there's just a lot of great partnerships that could use some fostering. But I'm gonna quit talking now, but at the end, I would like to talk about, I guess the other big thing is, there's a lot of regional transportation issues that are moving that involve us and that, as mayor, I was playing a role in that I would like to make sure we hand off. But since I feel like I've been talking too long, I'm gonna come back to that at the end. Did other people want to speak? Sam, and then Mary.
So I didn't get things sent in like other council members did, but there are a few things. One of the ones I want to call out is, just to make sure I understand what it is, says, says, "All council bike skateboard areas rules." I assume this is like where we can bike on sidewalks and where skateboards can be, and I would throw in there, there's the related thing about what we're gonna do with e-scooters. So e-scooters, we have a moratorium in place, but we don't have a set of rules developed yet for them. So I would just lump all of those alternative transportation things. I really do hope that the next council addresses making the rules clear for where bikes can be in multi-use paths or lanes or on sidewalks. So that was one thing. And then another thing that is still hanging out there is the electronic signature gathering. So that, the RFP's been done, and I expect the IT department, at some point, we'll see who got that contract. But then, you know, how long is that process realistically going to take? You know, because I know the conversations with the Secretary of State have been started. I know the conversation with the clerk has been started. When I've spoken with those two folks, they have a pretty high level of concern for data security and so on. So I think, you know, being realistic and highlighting what the likely schedule is is something that should probably come early so that the council can see it and figure out where it fits in the spectrum of things.
Sam, you're mentioning that. You're mentioning that reminded me that there has been a request by persons who were on the first task force on the voting to put a group into place, a public group such as that one, to be involved in this process. And at the time, for some reason, I thought there were quite a few nods up here that we would go forward with that, and I don't see any harm in it. Is there, are there any thoughts about doing something like that so that it, it's not just staff, or it's not that we throw it back out to the community to help with that?
Well, I mean, the question is, will it slow it down? Will it speed it up? Will it get it directed more correctly or less correctly? I don't know the answers to those questions. If the concern, I mean, I guess for me, I want to see who gets the, the award and how they're thinking about it. You know, just an initial conversation where, how do they think they can relate to the other people who have data that they'll need to interface with? And then it might be time to have a conversation about a task force because then you could have something maybe to talk about specifically. So I figured the next council would, would make that decision.
Bob?
I've been feeding to Taylor kind of random thoughts over the last several months. So the things that are in the memo are not things, a half dozen things that I suggested are not things that I feel super strongly about the next council could take a look at the, at the retreat. But the one thing I do feel pretty strongly about, which is not on my list, but I think it's on Mary's, I'm sure Mary will have something to say about this as well, is really a deep dive into the budget. You know, I'm concerned, while I think we did a lot of good things and a lot of things well in the last year or two, I, I am concerned about a few things on our budget. One is, I, I don't think that we're quite holistic enough in our approach to our needs. Things come along and we, we want to do them, and that's great. But we may not look at things across the board the way we should. I also worry that we have pressure on revenues. We've already started to see that with our, our sales and use tax, which of course is our, our number one source of funding. And I think it's only going to get worse. You know, all the, all the reports we hear out there is there's gonna be some macro headwinds as well. And so I think we may just be seeing the tip of the iceberg. So I think that we need to, number one, prepare for a revenue downturn. Secondly, regardless of whether our revenue takes a dip, I think we need to set the groundwork for not only the next council, but the future councils, in looking at our expenses and our priorities holistically rather than in silos. And, and so I would very much like to see that be a priority for the next council. Maybe it's of the Blue Ribbon Commission, maybe it's simply council rolling up its sleeves and looking at things across the board. But I think that's probably one of my, would be my number one priority for the next council.
Mary?
And I will agree with that, Bob. And I think that a deep dive into the budget could also encompass several other things that others have talked about here tonight, which, one was taking a look at the library finances. It could encompass that as well as encompassing the GARE work, the Government Alliance on Racial Equity work that is going on in the city. There's no better way to begin to address equity than to do it through the way the city spends its money. And then thirdly, the EMS, emergency medical services, and bringing them into the fold of the city. And so those are things that I think could be looked at as part of the deep dive. But I agree, I think it's critical that we begin to make decisions, especially when we approve master plans, that we see all the levers all at once so that we're not drawn to the latest shiny object and then, at lesser than, than optimal consequences. So that's-- So that's, that's one that I would hope gets priority in the next council. Another one that I hope gets some priority, and I, I think it has to happen either way because we're leading up to a vote on the municipal utility. And I want to say this without any kind of bias for one way or the other. I think we just need to have a community conversation about it openly, and there are many philosophical aspects of it that only the community can have. And I think that there are very many factual pieces of it, too, that need to be, everybody needs to be clear on, so I hope we can do that. And then the other thing that I will bring up at the retreat and see if folks want to at least take a look at, and that is ranked choice voting.
Say it again?
Ranked choice voting.
Oh.
I've been very concerned with this year being the second time that the appearance of the slate phenomenon happens. And I, I fear that what it does is it pulls us sideways instead of forwards. And I would like to take a look at this ranked choice voting as perhaps a way to help us move forward a little better than being pulled sideways every other year. So that's all I have.
Bye.
So I will jump on board with the budget discussion. I would love to see a deeper dive into that because I'm hoping maybe we can figure out some funding for then, as Mary said, and I was going to discuss was bringing our ALS, which are Advanced Life Support, into our fire services, just so we can join the front range community in what everyone is currently doing. And we're going to need, from my understanding, although I don't think we had the numbers ever, but it sounds like we're going to need some money for that. And then finally, I'd really like to make sure, because I think our police master plan is coming out, just to make sure that we're going to have room in the budget to fund and support our officers, because, you know, I think the work, I think there can be a lot of frustration in our community with some of the behaviors, and I think we're trying to rectify that. But I do think that our police force is something that needs to stay robust, and we need well-trained, well-informed officers to help keep the public safety intact. I think that's one of our highest, you know, priorities here. So I just want to make sure that we have enough money to be able to provide what they're going to request when that master plan comes out. So those are, oh, and then the other thing I'd like to look at, and I'll bring it up during the retreat, is that, you know, we do tend to get these shiny objects, as Mary said, every once in a while that tend to kind of throw off our schedule, so maybe we can look into building every quarter, like leaving a hold space for any surprises, like the vaping issue that was really important to address, but came out of, you know, nowhere perceivably. And so every quarter that we kind of have a space built in for that shiny object that we'll need to address. So something along those lines.
Just a couple more thoughts. Just, I know we talked about with transportation that Vision Zero is an ongoing project, but you know, right, we've got our transportation master plan, which we accomplished, which is great, and we've started, we've done a lot of great work on Vision Zero. But I just want to make sure that we continue to stay focused on those important transportation and transportation safety issues, as well as on the regional transportation things, which Sam's going to talk about a little more here in a minute. And so those are, those are critical. I just want to bring, so a lot of the planning work that we've done this year has been focused on, you know, say, making sure we don't get things that we're concerned about. But I just, I hope that the new council will also take a look at how we might tweak our policies so that we get, so we get some additional sort of housing in places like Diagonal Plaza, like Suzanne mentioned, you know, in kind of walkable mixed-use kind of neighborhoods, because I think we do have a critical need for housing with an emphasis on affordability. So I'd love to see us undertake some things that would help us get some more of that critically needed things. But we're all throwing out a lot of important initiatives, but Mary, I like what you said about the, a holding place for things that come up, because I think sometimes we can, with our ambitions, we can take on too large a list of priorities, and we end up exhausting staff, exhausting ourselves, and exhausting the community. It makes it hard to keep up. So I think the pace has been better this year than it has been in some other years, but, but I think, I'd just like to offer a word of recommendation to maybe, you know, focus in maybe a little bit more.
Lisa, then Sam?
So I appreciate the reserve for the little quarterly hold, but a couple years ago, Bob and I, we did the retreat committee and trying to, for two years in a row, and in each one of those, we tried to schedule extra time for bright shiny objects. But what happens is that our schedule gets completely full. And so you will have to be very disciplined and not take on so much at the beginning in order to keep that reserve. With regard to Diagonal Plaza, I would love to see that done. And again, if it was easy, it would have been done. And in fact, back in the mid 90s, many of us wanted to see that redeveloped. We even had the city do an appraisal in terms of how much that property was worth. There's multiple ownerships on that property, and it's private property. So for us to kind of push, it would require a condemnation. And in all my years in being on council, I only know of one condemnation, and that was for somebody building a house on open space. And so there, it's not such an easy thing to do, but I do bid you well in trying to get that done. And I will just remind everyone that the Rocky Mountain Greenway is still an idea that is in effect, that starts from DIA and goes through all the national refuges, and then comes up through Boulder, and then eventually to Rocky Mountain National Park. And so from my perspective, they're working on, you know, the refuges, but where will be our next biggest step will be going from North Boulder all the way up to Lyons and identifying a pathway, a safe pathway forward on the east side of 36. And then I, people are bringing up the EMS people, and I have no problem in bringing them in-house, but I, I would, I would not be true to myself and to custodians who have worked for the city that while we have brought them up to a self-sufficient C wage, we still do not have them receiving the same benefits that all of our other employees receive. And those benefits are incredible, and as Mary said, maybe the best way to look at racial equity is to be looking at our budget.
Sam?
So I just want to tag on to the budget. I agree with wanting to do a deeper dive into that. It's a complicated subject, and I'm afraid that Bob is right about headwinds coming our way. So all the more reason to do it. Then, I guess I would say that I thought this council started out doing pretty darn good with our scheduling. We were finishing meetings at 10:30 and, you know, and it seemed to be that we were getting our work done. But as you can see, with the ambition, a lot of this stuff took longer than we were hoping it would, and so it all stacked up at the end. And then at the end, our meetings weren't, you know, as efficient. We were getting out at after midnight, and we're having to do more special meetings. So it's completely understandable, the way it happens. It's just a question of, will we be able to do something intentional and purposeful to change that? And I think it's really hard because this community has a lot of bright shiny objects, and there's a lot of really motivated people around a bunch of different causes. And so something comes up like the Parkland shooting, and all of a sudden, we're talking about assault weapons, and that just hadn't come up before, and it, you know, it ate up like a month of time to be able to do that. So I, it's well worth trying again because I thought it started out well a year ago, but we ended up, partly because of things which came up, I think we ended up slowed down a little more. But I do agree on, we should put the budget like near the top of the list. Enough people have named it that it, you know, the new council, I expect that will come up near the top and sort other things underneath.
I would just like to say one thing about the budget, and that's that you look at subsidies wherever they may exist throughout, because there are lots of them in there. There's lots of duplication in different areas. And so there are ways, I think there's a lot in there that can be saved and can be used as things may flatten in the future.
Great. The council has a lot to do, and that's before they bring their own priorities. I would like to, if we were kind of done with that, I would, I would like to turn everybody's attention to something I put on Hotline right before the meeting, which I also printed out for all of you. And it just, it's the regional transportation work. And as mayor, unless you change it, and you may very well want to do that, the mayor ends up serving on several regional bodies. And so handing that off, but these bodies are doing really important work, and I just want to make sure everybody's aware of them. So when you figure out who picks up the slack, or not the slack, but who takes the baton, that everybody knows what's involved. And a couple of these, they meet monthly, some of them, and they will meet before the next council decides who serves. So just real quickly, there's U.S. 36 Mayors and Commissioners Coalition. It is kind of our go-to, that's all of the mayors and commissioners around the Northwest region, and this is where we do the primary work of fighting for dollars at the federal level, the state level, and working on state legislation. And this is a group that got us the U.S. 36 Managed Lands. So they do meet regionally, I'm sorry, monthly. I'm going to one more meeting on the 7th, but, and if anybody wants to come with me just to get a sense, that would be great. But then there's, I've listed them here, the next meeting's coming up. This group also meets quarterly with RTD, and there's a lot of business with RTD. You know, they're cutting service because they can't get labor. It's, it's sort of an ongoing struggle with them, and, but maintaining really strong relationships and communications is key. So I guess, I hope somebody can step into that before you make assignments. There's also two road-specific coalitions, one of them's Highway 7 Coalition, and the other one's Highway 119. Those are two other major arterial priorities. We're working very closely, so on Highway 7, that goes all the way to Brighton, that involves multiple counties. And the work there is to get that, to get that arterial recognized at the state level and then to get funding for it. And so that only meets quarterly, so that one's not going to meet again until the end of January. But the other big one, the 119 is the ripest and the kind of the next priority. And that's a smaller coalition, and it's mostly Boulder, Longmont, and Boulder County. And that one's meeting monthly, and the next one's on the 25th. We are, that project is, been studied, it's been, it's ready to be implemented, and it can be implemented in segments. So right now, we're talking with the CDOT about getting some of the money that used to be on the books from them as seed money to leverage additional funding. So that's a, put an extra, next to that one, and it may be that Erin, since you have been busy fighting for that money at Dr. Cog, that maybe, not to suggest, but maybe you wanted to step right into that one.
If I'm on the next council, I'm definitely interested in the 119 Coalition.
Okay.
Depending whoever, whatever colleagues are on there.
And then the last thing I'll just mention is the Metro Mayor's Caucus. Obviously, only the mayor gets to go to that. It is the 40 mayors in the whole metro region. Transportation is a key issue that's discussed there regularly, as is housing and homelessness. That one is less focused on our issues, but it's kind of our way of interacting with the larger metro region out there, and they're important relationships. So whoever ends up being mayor, I, if we want to have a larger influence, this is one of the ways to do that. And I ended up serving on XCOM. That's another way to do that, too, if whoever serves next. So I'm just going to highlight this. I think we get, one of the reasons we punch above our weight is because we are out there with relationships, making stuff happen. We have a delegation that's leading the state legislature. We have a governor that comes from Boulder. This is a really good time for us to help move climate action forward, multimodal transportation forward, all those things. But a lot of it happens based on relationships that span a number of years. So I guess if you guys want to break some of this work up, I think that's great, but there's a lot of strategy that happens in between meetings with staff and with the county and with the other municipalities that are, are allies. So anyhow, just, it's a whole body of work, and over the arc of a council or a couple councils, a lot can be done if, if we maintain those relationships. So that's my spiel. I would urge, I don't know, I guess I'm, I think people should sign up to take some of these meetings on before the next council, and maybe you guys can do that November 19th when you all re-up. But I wouldn't just let these fall through the cracks. And you probably heard that Kathleen Vraki is leaving the city to go to the county. The good news there is we're not losing her because she'll, but anyhow, all the more reason for council to step up and help because, you know, there's some turnover. Yes?
Yeah. Well, Zen, like I said at the very beginning of the meeting, thank you for all of your service on these things, and you've done a phenomenal job, and we owe you a lot of gratitude, a lot of time. You've also done a great job on it. So thanks for highlighting this. I mean, obviously, we have to see what happens in the election, who's around, but I think you can rest assured that whoever's around will make sure that these get filled and dealt with in consultation with our expert here. And are you, are you available for an extra meeting or two if necessary?
Sure. I'll do it, yeah. Although, I'm going to go skiing a lot. I also want to say that all this pairs really well with all the work, did I already say this, with, that you're doing at Dr. Cog, and that's been key. That's where we get our regional funding. So, back at you. Okay. Anything else? We have one more item, I guess?
A brief update on BI Inc. So I'm going to start out with this. At the Council Agenda Committee yesterday, the CAC requested that Carl Castile and I follow up with the owner of BI Inc. And Carl and I had about an hour-long conversation with him today to clarify issues with the ISAP program. So the ISAP program is the program that BI runs under contract with the Department of Homeland Security. And this is a program that was, that began probably officially in 2004, but the ideas for it began in the late 90s, when, when it was learned in the late 90s that people that were in the community and were supposed to show up for court were doing it at a rate of only 11 percent, and they wanted to improve that, that percentage. And so over time, programs developed that have people that are not detained in a correctional facility but allowed to be in the community, have, are monitored through GPS. And the show-up rate for court and for complying with court orders improved from 11 percent to like 90 percent. So a very effective program. The Department of Homeland Security is the authorizing group, I guess I'll say, for this program, and they direct what it will look like, including the kind of training that they want the people that do the, on the, on the ground, hands-on work to have. BI is the sole contractor currently for the ISAP program. There are 54 facilities throughout the United States where persons receive the GPS monitoring. All of the employees who deliver that service are trained at BI here in Boulder. They go through a two-week training program. They are qualified in that 96 percent of them are bilingual. They all They all have a bachelor's degree. Many of them have a master's degree. Many of them, in fact, most of them, are, have two years of experience as case managers in probationary-type programs. They come to BI for two weeks of training on the equipment, and on the procedures, and on humane treatment of people. Then they are supervised out in the field by project managers out in the field. And there's a whole kind of system, because it's an organization, of supervisors and reviews and things like that that occur. The way that it was described to me by Mr. Waldo and the training supervisor that we also talked with today makes it sound like they've done everything they can to make the program as humane as possible, as well-trained as possible, as good as possible, under the guidance of the Department of Homeland Security. So, taking a look at the 12 issues that our community activists raised with BI in August, there are several of them that are not within the control of BI. And so those are in the control of ICE or other management. Some of them are issues like these. Ankle monitors that are too type, tight. Beeping ankle monitors, low battery alerts, ISAP officers who are bullies, ISAP officers who treat transgender people inappropriately, and the grievance process does not protect people from retaliation. In my conversations with Mr. Waldo, what he said is that while there are always going to be circumstances in which an ankle monitor is too tight, or it's beeping, the person that is subject to that can always go in and talk to their case manager and have things fixed, and that those people are well-trained to do that. The complaints about ISAP officers who are bullies, he believes are one-offs, and that they're very well-trained to be great case managers. In fact, there's a program in which therapeutic wraparound services are being provided to some members of the community that are being monitored. The transgender situation, they have added LGBTQ training to their training manual, and they got approval from the Department of Homeland Security to do that. And in order to change anything in their training program, they have to get approval of the Department of Homeland Security. So, my sense of it is that they are trying very hard, and that there are always, because people are involved, there are always situations in which some people do not act well. And they seem to me to say that they are supervising that and trying to stop that. At the end of the conversation, I asked Mr. Waldo if he would nevertheless agree to meet with two members of our community, two members of council, and their folks. And he said that he needs to ask his next level of management if that is acceptable because so far, he has been told that that should not occur. So that's what I know.
Cindy?
So I thought part of the concern of our, the community activists here was the affiliation with GEO and the involvement with that?
Yes. So GEO, GEO was essentially, I think, the owner of BI. So they are part of the upper-level GEO. BI, our Boulder corporation, from my understanding, has no influence over its owner, GEO. It can't make GEO do anything. And the thing that Mr. Waldo says, and I think it's true, is that the Department of Homeland Security has rules that must be followed. And while we all may disagree with those rules and with the policies, that these corporations are not in a position to change those policies. Our representatives at the federal level are the ones that we would need to appeal to, to change the policies of the Department of Homeland Security.
So I was, saw last Thursday night, a show on PBS. I think it's John Ferrugia, who's one of the station managers, who reported on the detention center in Denver. And I have to say, it was pretty horrific. It was really horrific. And anything that the city council can do in terms of talking to our federal persons, I would think would be helpful, to try and put a stop to, or at least improve the situations of the people who are detained, and the manner in which they are detained. And I would recommend everyone take a look at that. It's not fun, not pretty, but it's certainly informative.
I have Erin and then Sam.
Yeah, thank you for that, Cindy. So Jane, I appreciate you taking the time and talking to Mr. Waldo. So it's good to get some additional information. I do think we should continue to press for the meeting, because I know that it sounds like they're working to address some of these issues, but I know that the citizen activists have some real specific items in there, and perhaps with some kind of facilitation, some council members, you know, we could help get the specifics of those messages across. And maybe there's some additional things that they could do in terms of their practices. So I'd like to, for us to continue to encourage that to happen.
Sam?
Pretty much the same. I, you know, I read the note we got back from the attorney, and as well, the stuff that we've heard from activists, and it seems to me like there's room for exchange in here. I've been reading quite a bit about the detention facilities as well, and I don't know exactly how ISAP relates to the bigger picture of detention facilities, but they're pretty, pretty unpleasant. And so, it's worth the conversation to continue. I, if they choose not to, I mean, Tom, I had a question for you. You know, are we allowed to do a resolution? It's non-binding, right? So if we did a resolution, all we'd be doing is making a statement of the sense of council.
Yep.
And so, there seemed to be some pretty stiff resistance by the attorney for BI that we couldn't do that, that it was governmentally inappropriate.
Yep. He's wrong.
Okay. That's kind of what I thought. So it does seem like we, if we can't make any more progress, we can do kind of the last thing that we're allowed to do, which is to put out a resolution expressing the will of council.
So one thing I do want to clarify is that, my understanding is that BI is not related to the detention facilities. The program that they operate, this ISAP program, is for persons who are not detained, persons who are in the community, and they're provided with ankle monitors, or they also have a smartphone app that, in lieu of that, so that they will get messages to show up at court and stuff like that. So what happens at the detention facility, I think is distinct from this particular program run by the Boulder company.
Okay. Well, I said, there was Bob and then Mary.
Jane, did Mr. Waldo say when he would get back to you on whether he had permission to have a follow-up meeting?
He said that he had contacted, I've made another request to the supervisor, and will let me know as soon as he hears back.
Yeah.
Mary?
So I think that if we can get that meeting, it would be helpful to better understand things, like one of the things that you mentioned, Jane, was that when, one of, or the issues that were brought up by the community was that there's beeping, or the ankle monitors are too tight, and you said, they're always welcome to go to their case managers. And it seems to me that if that happens in the evening, you probably couldn't get there until the next day. So that's, that's pretty harsh. So I don't know if it would be within their, that would be a question to ask. Is it in your purview to change that policy, to be able to get attention to that situation immediately so that somebody doesn't have to go through the night with that? So, so those are, those are things that may be within their capacity to change. So it would be worthwhile to sit down with them and just have a conversation and ask more questions, and just be helpful about it.
Right. So I know that Mr. Waldo would gladly meet with any of you, and I think you could get your questions answered there. I mean, Carl and I tried to ask every question that we could think of, and, yeah, we didn't think of that one. We were asking questions more about the training manual and stuff. So I don't know if you want to do that or not, but I would suggest that, rather than me being a go-between and not thinking of every question you would want to ask.
No, that's right. And I think, I think that the ultimate situation would be to have council members and community members there and all the citizens there.
Absolutely, yeah.
So that, I think that would be the best case. And we'll hold out for that.
Okay.
At least I would like to hold out for that and see if we can get there. If not, then we take our next steps.
Does this council want us, we just want to wait in here? Do we want to set F/A, then B, kind of things in place?
Make a suggestion. The next council meeting is the 19th of November. I would think that that would be an adequate amount of time for Mr. Waldo to get back to Jane about the, about the meeting. So I might suggest that CAC put this on as a discussion point again on the 19th of November, and we'll either have a yes or a no, and I guess I would interpret silence as a no.
So just so I'm understanding, that the last act of this council on the 19th, or the act of, the first act of the new council?
First act of the new council. First act of the new council. And it wouldn't necessarily be a resolution. It would just be getting, you know, Jane will obviously let us know as soon as she hears, and there may be some activity before then. But if there hasn't been any activity before then, I think maybe the new council can take that up and say, geez, we haven't heard back, or we heard back a disappointing answer. And to Mary's point, you know, let's hold out first for a meeting with community members and council members, and if that is not forthcoming, three weeks seems to me more than enough time, then the next council, as one of its first acts, can talk about what the next steps are. Well, and if they do say yes, the first act could be to nominate two members. Nominate two members and get going. Yep.
Well, I was going to say, if we hear back before then, we could go ahead and nominate two people. Now?
Well, I was just going to ask that we could, that we would go ahead, though, and make some move with our legislative person to move towards some kind of, even though it's in another city, the detention center, that we try to move forward with registering our, I can't even think of the word.
Can I just, while you're thinking, because we actually have a meeting in the Legislative Committee tomorrow, so we can make sure that this is high up on our legislative agenda.
That would be great.
Our federal representative.
Well, and I also think that this is something that we could involve our congressional delegation in.
Yep.
And I'm imagining it might be amenable to, Jane?
Well, can we get that on our legis, that breakfast, just get it on the agenda for, in December?
Yes, we can. Though the legislative breakfast, I think it's only our state legislators, as opposed to our federal legislators.
But maybe somebody, I was going to say, next time we see Joan Agus, we will, let us make a point of asking him. Okay. And we'll talk about it tomorrow at the legislative agenda. We want to just leave it be as is, and CAC will see if anything happens, and try to tee it up for the next council then. Does that feel, do we want to leave it there?
Did we want to put two people, two people's names forward, so that if Mr. Waldo does come forward, that we're already there and we've set up our subcommittee?
Only if two of Mirabai, Sam, and Mary are willing, because I think you're the only ones that we know for sure are around for long enough.
Works for me.
Well, I was going, yeah, I think anyone, any two of the three of you would be great. Yeah, you would.
Okay.
I'm happy to do it.
All right. So let's just wait till we hear back, Mary, and then Mirabai and I can, one of us, come along with you.
That work?
That's right.
Let's leave that there. We have reached the end of our meeting.
The end of our council.
The end of our council.
I'm going to call it a wrap.
Going to call it a wrap.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure. That's Lisa's line.
We didn't, but we didn't, well, I'm taking over. After all, we're kind of interchangeable to a lot of people's eyes. But I just want to thank Cindy, and Suzanne, and Lisa for their service, and how much I enjoyed working with you all in this council. Good luck and best wishes to you.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Enjoy those Tuesday nights off.
We'll be waving there.
Right. Yeah. And a special thank you to Suzanne for being our mayor for the last four years and herding this group of cats on a weekly basis. It's a, it's a tough task, and you've done it very well.
They're very cool cats. All right. Oh, Mirabai.
And I'll just say, as this being my first council, and the way that everyone spoke about this kind of being their favorite council, I'm a little scared moving forward. Having seen previous councils as well, just from a citizen standpoint, I think I was very spoiled. And so I do hope the new council can take this council's lead and have the respect and courtesy, even if we disagree, that we can work together, because it's been an honor to work with all of you, and thank you for your service, and thanks for helping guide Boulder, and thanks for helping mentor the newbies.
Yes. Just thank you again, Lisa. Thank you again, Cindy. Thank you again, Suzanne.
Suzanne.
Zan.
You're in trouble.
Mayor.
That's right.
As soon as you bang that gavel.
I'm done. I'm, I'm.
Done running meetings.
Two, one.
One.
All right.
All right, Jane.